Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Special Workshop. Today is Saturday, October 10th, and I'd like to welcome anyone that is joining us this morning. We are remote due to the COVID-19 restrictions from the governor. So if you're joining us on Kent TV 21, Facebook Kent Channel, or Kent, the YouTube Kent TV Channel, or calling in, I would like to welcome everyone that is watching this morning. To get us started, I just want to welcome you all. We had a rough week. We had a long meeting on Tuesday filled with lots of emotion, and I think that we need to put that aside. We are a strong council. There are seven of us. We all have different ideas and different opinions, and I think that's what makes us great. In the end, we work together to do what's best for the city of Kent. We have an opportunity before us. We have a job at hand. And again, this is all about teamwork. I want to thank the mayor for including us in this process. We continue to have multiple opportunities to talk about the budget and give our input. And I want to thank you, Mayor Ralph, for always including us in that process. We have all had an opportunity to provide questions, and I want to say thank you to our CAO Derek Matheson for keeping those organized and making sure they get to the right directors. And thank you to our department directors for taking the time to answer those questions. Together, we can come up with a document that is fiscally responsible and moves us in the direction we can all be proud of. So thank you again for coming together this morning to talk about the budget. And with that, let's go ahead and get started. I would like to welcome Paula Painter to answer some of our questions. Welcome, Paula.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Council President Troutner, members of the city council. Happy to be here this morning to continue our discussion on the mayor's 2122 proposed budget. So what I will be doing for this first session is going through some of the questions that have come in thus far. I know a list went out to everyone yesterday morning of the current questions that we've been asked. That list does continue to grow, so we are still working on getting that updated and getting it assigned to the right individual to be able to get the questions that you need. What you're going to find today is, based on the list that we have thus far, there'll be some of those questions that I'm going to answer here in the next 20 minutes or so. And then throughout some present, the department presentations today, the directors will be including answers to some of your questions as well. So let's go ahead and move on to the next slide, please. So one of the questions that came up, this is question number seven. Why is the medical increase so high even though we didn't increase last year? So historically, what we have found as an organization is that by continuing to do incremental increases, it does help to save us from what you're seeing occurring on this graphic. So what I did, I had reached out to HR, so thank you so much to HR Department who was able to grab history not only for city of Kent, but then also for AWC and PEB. Now, both AWC and PEB, which is the state, they have multiple plans. So we tried to pick a few that were very similar to our self-insurance plan to be able to share kind of what their rate increases have looked like over the years. And this is what this graphic is showing you here. What I want to find, what I want to point out that is really interesting is, even if you look at the PEB rates, if you look at 2016, you notice that they did actually a negative because they probably had a little bit of fund balance in there, and it seemed appropriate to kind of bring it down, let's run down fund balance. But if you notice, all of the sudden, we're now seeing double-digit increases in 2017. And then we continue on to kind of a moderate sort of increase. Then you can see the same sort of thing happened with the region's high deductible plan. There was in 2014, a 0% increase, 5% increase, then we bumped up to 9, 10, and 13. So ultimately, the idea is to be able to smooth out these, the premiums. So we're not seeing these spikes. And if you look here, there is this darkest line is the city of Kent. And you can see that we actually did in 2014, 15, we had 0% increases. We saw a reduction in 16. Sorry, my lines are off by a year. The graphics are staying a little different than the chart. But we had two years of zero. We had a decrease. And then the next thing we know, not only did we spike up in 2000, not only did we go up slightly in 2017, but look at the spikes that you see in 2018 and 19. And what was really interesting with what you're seeing here is you notice at the very bottom of this chart, it shows you what the actuary actually recommended. So in 2018, they actually recommended a 55% increase. Those are the types of things that we hope to alleviate by being conservative with our approach moving forward. Now, the actuary did give us the 3.8% increase. So that is what we have proposed in the budget and what we are sticking with. This dotted line, what you're going to see here, this is AWC's 10-year average. So looking at the two programs, the two plans that you see below, their 10-year average is 8 or 7%. One plan actually is at 8% over the 10-year for year-over-year increase. And then the other plan was at 6% year-over-year increase. When you start looking at some of the others, when you start looking at trends, maybe not going out 10 years, looking at three, five, seven, 10 years, with AWC, those ranged from a 4% to a 9% increase year-over-year. In Kent, if we look back and average back seven years, I apologize, I ran out of time to get the other, the other years, but to come up with 10 years. But looking at the seven-year trend, we are at 6.77. So we're right at this average trend line that you're seeing here. We're just about on par with that. The challenge is, is when you start looking at the three to five years, we have actually seen some spikes because we had allowed our medical premiums to stay low for quite some time, and we had to start making that up. Do you guys have any other questions about that? Oh, and one other thing I did want to mention, because of the size of our plan, if we receive a couple of high claims, a couple extra high claims beyond what's normal, that does tend to have some more significant impact on some of our rates and actually on our plan itself. So that's something to keep in mind, which is why you'll see some of this volatility as well.
Thank you so much, Paula. Councilmember Voice, do you have any additional questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So Paula, I get, I understand this insurance, I understand how the rates go. When we look at our, and we have a pretty good insurance package for the city. I'm more concerned about our neighboring city for the insurance that they offer, deductibles and all that stuff. Are we in line with them?
That is a great question. You know, I didn't pull the surrounding cities to see what their increases have been year-over-year and their rates, but I'd be happy to add that list, that question to our list.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't need the answer right away. I just think as we go forward, right, I mean, we're in the private sector, the public sector, you continue to see the medical cost goes up, and some organization, public, private, they make adjustment where sometime, you know, some had to be leaning on towards the employee and not always versus the business itself. So there's something to think about because I think there's going to be a constant thing as we go on with the increases. And I think somehow, we're going to have to try to get out in front of it, so.
Yeah, absolutely. What I can say, Councilmember Voice, is that there are cities within the state of Washington clearly that belong to the PEB program and the AWC program. So depending on what, what cities belong there, some of those surrounding cities would fall into these top three programs. But I will add that question and see what we can find out.
I don't, that probably would take a lot to research that, so I don't need anything today. Maybe, you know, it could be something we can get later on as we go forward. I think, Madam Mayor, say something.
Yeah, thank you. Bill, the other part, Councilmember Voice, the other part of the question that I'm hearing is about, is about benefits. Are benefits similar to our surrounding cities?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so I can tell you, I just actually had a chance to look at Renton's plan, and we're, we're pretty much on par. They have a different, a different provider. Their carrier is different. But I, I would venture to guess at least every other city that I've known with our two available plans, our high deductible and the 80/20, that were absolutely in the same area as what our neighbors, our neighboring governments are offering.
And Paula, I don't, I don't need to do anything else. I think I'm okay. I just think as we go forward, you know, we just, we just need to start thinking about. But I don't need anything else now, okay?
Okay, that sounds great. I will just have this on kind of our thought process as we move forward in the future to talk about these rates and what it looks like then. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paula.
All right, next, if there's no more questions, we can go ahead and go on to the next slide.
Thanks, Paula. I think we can go ahead and move on.
All right, so question number 37 on page 29 of the budget book. Why is the Culture and Rec budget reduced by $662,000 in 2022? The budget really wasn't reduced by $662,000. We, as we put this budget book together, we have really been under the wire, and this is an area where we actually had a formula issue, and I'm going to apologize for that. Looking at this, what you see on the screen is that are the numbers that should be presented on the graphic on page 29. What had happened is when we picked up our formulas, they didn't pick up properly. I do apologize for that. We will be printing you new pages and getting those in your mailboxes to replace this page that you have here. So as you see, the reduction really isn't there. The number was overstated in the budget book. Any questions on that?
Do we know what it is? Or you just say you need time to go and figure it out, is what I'm hearing?
Actually, there wasn't a reduction in the Cultural and Rec. If you look at page 20, 29, and we have now fixed it, these are the accurate numbers. If you look at page 29, it was showing Cultural and Rec with an adopted budget of 20, for 2021, or $14.2 million. And as you can see, that number is really only 13.1. Because then what had happened is you were seeing over here in 2022, we had a $13.5 million budget. So the, the question that was really being asked is, why did we go from 14.2 to 13.5? And really, it was because that was an error in our presentation of the table. It really was not a reduction in their budget. Next slide, please. So question number 40, why is there a reduction in the Health and Human Services? So again, we're looking on page 29. Now, Health and Human Services is the line that is under that Cultural and Rec's number that is on page 29, and that number was accurate. So what had happened, when you're trying to compare what's going on in 2021, there's a couple of things that have happened. And for one, there was a reduction, or there was a one-time carryforward from 2019 of $136,000 that did roll forward from 2019 into 2020. That means that $136,000 would not roll into 2020. So therefore, you're going to have that reduction looking from year to year. And so that is actually speaking of, the actual amount of reduction is $24,000. So with that $36,000 carryforward, that's really addressing the most of that. There were some reductions, as you can recall, that happened related to COVID. Some of those reductions, though, did not, it did have some reduced expenditure. However, some of that was a shift of an incumbent to another funding source and actually being able to utilize that King County levy to cover one of those positions.
Councilmember, Councilmember Fincher, do you have a question?
Yes, so was that carryover because the money was left over? The money was left over because it was designated for something? Was it left over because it simply wasn't spent? What was the reason for the carryover?
So when we do carryovers, what it is, is there's items that do get budgeted within a specific fiscal year to be spent. However, they, they engaged, they had a contract, and I don't know specifically what this is about. But what ends up happening is that they were intended to spend it in 2019, but because of the timing is when they could get it done, the dollars really did not come out of the budget until 2020. So it is a shifting, and I'd have to look back to see what specifically that $136,000 was for. But with carryforward, it is something that was budgeted. Do you need that specific information, or is just understanding how the carryforward work appropriate?
Well, I would like to know if it was for something, were we working on a special project? And so it was carried over on purpose, or was it simply just not spent because it was brand and we didn't deviate out to organizations? I would like to know. Thank you.
Okay, yep, we will look that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. That was actually my question, Paula. And is there expectation that we'll have carryover going into 2021? Typically, there are some, every year, there are some levels of carryovers that happen in various departments, whether there's going to be one for parks. I can't answer that. It really has to do with timing. So I've seen, another example of a carry, carryforward is, sometimes in fleet, this happens when they order a vehicle, but it takes so long to get the vehicle in that they actually have to pay for it in the following year. So that would be another example of a carryforward. And we won't really know until we get to the end of the year to see how the timing plays out. So we really, carryforwards typically aren't predicted this early. It's really having to do with timing. Thank you. Okay, I actually was just received the breakdown of that $136,000 that was carryforward. There was $2,000 for social equity training, $15,000 for youth employment projects. There was $73,300 for Human Services Agency, and $46,000 for Public Defense Appeals.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like it was a plan that we were carrying it forward on purpose, that it had been reserved to go forward for those reasons.
Absolutely. Everything that's carried forward has to have a purpose. It really does have to be defined, and yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to the next slide, please. So question number 46 is on page 60 and 61, is the actual, is this the actual policy wording? So the, the wording that is in the policy, or that is on page 60, talking about fund balances, is actually how it is in our policy. And this was adopted through Resolution 1952 that was passed in December 2007, excuse me, 2017. So, so in short, yes, the answer, the, the policy does read exactly how it is shown on, in the budget book. All right.
Madam President.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Voice.
This is a process question. I think as we go through these questions here, and then the people on the council member who put the question out there, I think we want to make sure we bring clarity before we move forward to make sure the council member question is, that's a process question, please, going forward.
So just making sure that particular council member's question was answered. Absolutely, that's totally fine. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. This was my question. Sorry, I was just telling Paula that I'm good.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, next question. So question number 53. It says, why was there a reduction for $315,320 for parks in 2022? And again, this was another formula error. I do apologize. Bottom line was, was fine. What had happened is a million dollars of transfer out into non-departmental ended up in parks, and that was an error. There will be a new sheet coming out. So again, very similar to the question that was raised before, there really isn't, there is not a reduction in parks. As you can see, it went from 2020 of 18.7 to 19.3 to $20 million. Councilmember Michelle, did that answer your question?
Yes, Paula, thank you.
Thank you. All right, question 54. Why is the police budget increasing each year by $1.5 million-ish? With that one, when about just over two-thirds of the police budget is salaries and benefits. So naturally, as we have COLAs, as we have increases in medical, you're going to see growth in salaries and benefits. That's always going to be a factor. And as you can see here, we did have growth in salaries and benefits of 1.1 million. Then you add in, every year, we do add 2% to supplies and services. And again, police, the police department has a budget of $45 million. And so when you're looking at that large of a budget, you start adding 2%, it doesn't take you very long to get to $1.5 million. In addition, there are other things that do impact the growth in the police department, which truly are outside of the controls of the police department. And that is, for example, they do have to be able to provide medical care to people who are inmates. So, so you would see, if you look at the charges for services that did go up beyond 2%, because we have anticipated increased costs for jail services based on some RFPs that are out there. So it doesn't take much to create an increase of about $1.5 million in the police department, just based on those factors. When, when we talk about this, oftentimes, if a question is very specific, why did it increase by this number from here to here? I can kind of break it out better. I thought it might just be easier to show 21, 22 kind of as an example of how you would see those increases.
Councilmember Thomas, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam President. So Paula, that salaries and benefits, that includes COLA, doesn't it? Was it 1%?
Yes, it does. It includes the 1% COLA. It includes medical. It includes, it includes all benefits for them. Oh, and but in 2022, I'm sorry, 2021, it was a 1% COLA. In 2022, we have earmarked because we don't, we try to be prepared for whatever it might be. We do have earmarked 2.5% COLA in 2022.
That's very realistic.
Yeah, because this year was only 1%, but I don't Yeah, because this year was only one percent, but I don't know that it's really going to be that low going next year. And so two and a half percent on this does bump it up quite a bit.
I know, previous years, COLAs was much higher than one percent, so your, this budget of one point five is not excessive at all.
Councilmember Michelle, did that answer your question?
Yes, Paula, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next question, please. Okay, so question number fifty-five, page ninety-five, why is there a thirty-six point five percent increase for HR in twenty twenty-two? And this is for five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So really, what we did is we gave you a breakdown here, you can see salaries, benefits, supplies, services, and cost allocations. One of the things to note, and that's going to come up to your five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. One of the things to note is the services. Dollars, and what that is made up of is their share of the workday. That new HR payroll system of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. As well as their basic two percent increase, the new IT allocation of three, it's, it's. The additional IT allocation, the allocation for IT really isn't new, it's just an addition to it. Plus just some other miscellaneous stuff, and that came to a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar increase for services. Now, what ends up happening with the cost allocations, as you recall, we have a two-year lag. Which means in twenty twenty-two, we are actually going to be allocating out the actual expenditures in twenty twenty. With all of the reductions and savings that we have tried to achieve in two thousand twenty. We're anticipating that the HR department will not be able to allocate out as many of their expenses as they were. In twenty twenty-one. And that is because we did, if you, if you recall during the budget reduction exercise we just did. We did shift a portion of salaries and benefits to the medical fund. The admin position was eliminated, and there was a reduction in spending. And they had some vacancies, so that then gets you to. Those three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke, can I please clear something up? That two hundred and sixty-five thousand, that does include the position that was eliminated, I apologize. The seventy thousand is a position that was moved to administration.
Councilmember Voice.
Thank you, Madam President, Paula, that workday subscription, it has an ongoing, ongoing charge to us?
Yes, it is, and that is split between HR and finance, so that's HR's portion.
And maybe later on, not today, I know each department is contributing to that workday subscription. There's a cheat sheet you can put together, saying what each one is paying towards workday.
Right now, so, right now, what, when it comes to actually paying the subscription, it is just finance and HR that's paying it. Then what will happen is two years, so in twenty twenty-four, HR will allocate out. Their, their actual expenditures from twenty twenty-two, which would include that workday subscription. To the customers they are supporting with the use of that workday subscription. So it will be two years before any other department besides HR and finance will incur that cost.
Why is that, I'm just curious, because everybody will be utilizing the tool, or why the two years? Before one of us start contributing to it?
So it's with, with the allocation model that we're using. So when, when we allocate out to departments based on our expenditures, we need to do it based on actuals. And when this program was put into place, it made the most sense to look back two years. Because then we have our actuals finalized and use to reimburse ourselves two years from now. It becomes really difficult to try to do true-ups, at the moment, things are happening because. And it's also difficult to put budgets together if we're trying to guess what the allocation should look like before a year. Or two have even finished, so this has been the process for this, and over time, we recoup all of our charges. And the auditors are definitely going to want to see that. We have a method to ensure that we are only charging out actual costs for the services that are being provided to the departments. And so this seemed to be the cleanest method, it, it's cleanest, although it does create some levels of complication. The reason why this is most notable, though, is because we have changed slightly how we have done our IT allocation. So this is exasperated things, typically, if we hadn't changed this. And we had always been charged for, for example, our J.D. Edwards system. We wouldn't be seeing these large fluctuations, but because we've changed that methodology, it, it really complicates matters. But two years from now, this really shouldn't be such huge swings like we're seeing right now.
Well, you answered my question, what I heard you say is that, is that eventually, you will get that cost back. Two years down the road, and then after that, it will be evenly distributed based on. How the tools get utilized within each organization, is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Question number fifty-five, does that, is that satisfied?
Yes, Paula, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sorry, Councilmember Michelle, we're in your section right now. Okay, question number fifty-seven, page one oh five, what does the Police Criminal Justice Fund expenditures consist of? There were two numbers that were provided. The first number, the three point nine million dollars, we're able to find that, I wasn't able to find the four point two. So Councilmember Michelle, I may not have addressed that question for you, so I apologize. And if I need to continue on with the four point two, I will, I just couldn't figure out what that was. But in two thousand, the Criminal Justice Fund is made up of various. Expenditures that fall under police activity, it's general criminal justice. That is pretty much cost allocations. The police, some police admin, records, investigation, evidence, and patrol.
Paula, that four point two number was just the twenty twenty-two proposed, what I actually meant to ask was the police special programs. For the second part.
The police special programs, I actually, I think that's our next, next slide. So does this answer the question for this one?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so if we go to the next slide, this will be the special programs. And under the special programs. The special programs are made up, that line item is made up of police confidential, police explorers, boat registration and safety. Drug task force, sex trafficking, victim services, traffic school, school zone cameras, and red light cameras. So that is what falls into that category.
Councilmember Almar, did you have a question? Yes, I did, actually, if we could go back one slide, I have a question on that slide and this one as well. So on the previous slide, so the patrol line item that comes out of criminal justice, is that salaries and benefits? Does that come out of general?
You know, there, the police department has some of this activity that comes out of the general fund. And some of the activity that comes out of the Criminal Justice Fund. The Criminal Justice Fund, it receives funding that has to be used specifically for criminal justice. So you will see it split between both general fund and criminal justice. The dollars that you see there for patrol does have some of the salaries and benefits in there, I don't have those numbers for patrol specifically. Right in front of me.
That's okay, I think that just answered my questions.
Okay, thank you.
Of both funds, actually, okay.
Yeah, yes.
And then on the next slide. So on the school zone camera, red light cameras here, are we, so this is our, our expense to run it, or is this revenue? Confused what these, we're looking at on the last two line items.
These are the expense, these are the proposed budgeted expenses.
So we recoup that plus more.
Yes, yeah, we budget to ensure that our funds are in balance.
But knowing.
I don't, I, hold on, I don't have how much we have budgeted for. For revenues for school zone, hold on, let me look to see, school zone and red light cameras.
And you can get back to me on that, because I think it's.
Yeah, let's do that.
Today, they've paid for themselves.
Yeah, because I'm already running on, taking more time than I thought that I would. Okay, so we will get back to you on revenues and expenditures for school zone and red light cameras. Yes.
Councilmember Michelle, did you have additional questions on that?
Yes, thank you, Council President, so Paula, does that school zone camera, does that money there, those expenses include the vehicles?
For the, yes, it does, for the school zone cameras, yeah.
And like the body worn cameras is included in the red light, I'm guessing?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good.
Perfect. All right. So then there were some other questions that came up, and I'd like to, with question number twenty-nine, I would like to see if Pat Fitzpatrick can help. Speak to this a little bit, on page forty-six, I just wanted to reiterate my interest in working with the lot owners and seeding grass over the. Penguin plot in the, in the downtown, Pat, would you be willing to speak to that for me?
Sure, no problem, so I don't know the fate of the Penguins, but as far as the lots goes. Those lots are owned by two different individuals, they're both concreted over, and so basically, under state law. A city is not permitted to provide gifts of public funds, and so if we just want to go in there and improve it. On behalf of these property owners, that would be a gift of a public fund. Only way I could see this possible is if we. Entered some kind of lease agreement, but it would require, I think, a significant project at significant expense. So I don't know who the properties are or where they are located, I don't know if they are in-state or out-of-state, the property owners. So I, we can't just, it's not a simple process, I guess, is the best thing I can say. Does that answer the question?
It does, I just know that was something that was, you know, mentioned probably over a year ago, that. If there is a way to work with the property owners, I think it's two of them, and they're free to do it themselves, if we could just find a way to. You know, at least make that a little bit more presentable, while they figure out their feud. But now that makes sense about the gifting, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping out with that question, Pat. Paula, do we have any other questions that you want to address?
Yeah, I just have two more, and then we're done, and we can move on. Question number forty-three, page thirty-two, the one point eight million dollars, is it specifically earmarked for anything? So the one point eight million dollars, which is the outdoor storage, the new outdoor storage tax that we have, that we have put into the capital resource. Fund, that has been allocated to projects, so earmarked, yes, I can't tell you exactly what project it's for. Because it was put into that pool of revenue that could be used for capital projects. So it's not specifically tied to one project, but it is all earmarked, because we do have a balanced budget within the capital resource fund. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
All right, great, and then question number sixty, page one fifteen, why is the park orchard question improvements listed without funding? And that is because it is actually on the six-year plan, we shouldn't have listed it, because it's not meant to be spent during this biennium. And it should have only had projects that should have funding for this biennium, so that line should be removed. All right, and that, yeah, that's, thank you, and that concludes my, my review of questions. Unless you guys have anything else you need from me.
Thank you so much, Paula, trying to get us back on track here, we are going to move on to the next. Group of presentations, starting with Julie Perescondola, talk about parks, welcome, Julie.
Hi, good morning, everybody, let me just get my screen up here. All right, so good morning, Mayor, Council President, and Council Members, it is good to virtually see you all today. I am kicking off the day today, so hopefully you've all had your morning coffee, because you know how I talk a lot. So I am planning on going over quite a bit today, and so I'm totally fine if you jump in with questions, definitely do have to get through it all, so. Keep that in mind, so unfortunately, I will not be here with you all for the whole day, because my daughter is having her baby shower this afternoon. So that's why I'm first on the agenda, so thank you for that.
But you were just to give us the energy, because we get lots of energy from you.
I know, well, last year I was last, so I'm kind of excited to, you know, start it up, kick it off here, so. But worst-case scenario, if questions do come up after the end of the day or later on over the weekend, as you're muddling through what you learned today. Happy to answer any questions as it comes up. I also do have Marina online today. And she is available, and we have her expertise if we need it, so one quick question here. Hold on, technical difficulties. I split my screen earlier to be able to do this, and now it's locked, hold on. Good thing it printed. Okay, so for the record in listening audience, I am Julie Perescondola, Director, representing the team from Parks Recreation and Community Services today. Before I get into details of our twenty-one, twenty-two budget, I'd like to take a moment on record to thank and share. My appreciation for our entire Parks leadership team and all the staff throughout the department. It's been a very, very challenging year in more ways than I can describe to you all today. Continuing to manage fiscal realities and staffing community needs in such a rapidly changing environment. And quite frankly, in both unknown and uncharted waters, too, is probably the most difficult experience all of us have had. To face in our careers to date, you know, I'm so proud of my team for always rising to the occasion. Not just for a community that we serve daily, but for each other as well. And I just personally want to also thank and do a shout out to our recreation team, who is now on their fifth month of furlough. They, you know, I want them to know they're loved and not forgotten, and we very much look forward to the day that they all come back and rejoin us in recovery efforts and healing. So truly thank you to the team, I couldn't do this without y'all, I'm humbled to stand with you guys always. So as I was looking past, you know, into twenty twenty, it was actually really difficult to work through accomplishments this past year. You know, we started off the year winning, we did advance our goal of strategic planning by completing three additional critical plans for our department. The eight-year recreation program plan, the five-year human services strategic plan, and the CDBG consolidated plan. You know, all three of these plans were very aggressive. With community engagement processes, where we talked or surveyed thousands, you know, not hundreds, but thousands of Kent residents. In seeking feedback, special attention was also placed on racial equity when receiving and seeking feedback. But also gender, geographic, and racial equity, with special outreach done to some of our most vulnerable populations here in the city. So we have done an immense amount of work talking to our residents. You know, it's these guiding plans that really helped us in working through our priorities, budget reductions, programs, service adjustments, and more. So everything we did this past May during COVID reductions, as well as going through this twenty-one, twenty-two budget process. Is one hundred percent in alignment with these plans, other existing departmental plans, and our community priorities. I'll share a little bit more later, but I'm also very proud to also. I'll share a little bit more later, but I'm also very proud to also share that Riverbend Golf Course has officially paid off its $4 million plus interfund loan to the general fund, as well as created an additional $500,000 cash reserve within the golf fund, and also advanced many capital improvement projects, including the kickoff of Riverbend's new driving range. So more to come on Riverbend soon. With the support of you all and the mayor and her office, we have officially begun the cleanup and restoration of the city's beloved Mill Creek Canyon. Super excited about this. This location, I've said this before, is an incredible, beautiful nature oasis away from the city life here in Kent. But it has unfortunately been targets of illegal dumping, vandalism, encampments, and other types of illicit use. We have been there for about a month now, and the contractor has officially hauled out approximately 80 yards of garbage and debris, 518-gallon container barrels of needles, and 50-plus shopping carts, and a whole bunch of other stuff I won't even get into. You know, we're not finished there yet. We are going to continue working out there, and we will share more with the council on this particular project in a few months as we begin to look towards the end. So finally, if I had to pick my most profound, or our department's most profound accomplishment in 2020, I'd have to say it was our response and recovery approach to the COVID-19 pandemic and our continued focus on staff and community resilience. Our department has always served the people direct, and this has hit staff just as hard, to see their friends, their participants, parents and families, organizations and businesses they've worked with for decades, you know, all struggling through this pandemic. But they've really rolled up their sleeves and are doing whatever they can to support our community, such as providing meals and food for children, families, and seniors, completing senior wellness checks and providing opportunities to have access to healthcare. We are consistently keeping our parks trails and open spaces safe, open, and accessible. We are creating virtual opportunities to continue to stay active or learn. We are passing on as much CARES and other COVID response funding directly to our partners and community, and so on. You know, and also, and not to be left out, our facilities team has spent an unimaginable amount of hours preparing and cleaning our facilities in an effort to keep employees and visitors safe and sanitized, both now during somewhat of a closure, as well as being prepared to open as soon as the governor allows that. So much more accomplishments there, but that's kind of the gist at a high level. You know, it was really difficult to look into the crystal ball of what 21 and 22 might bring, you know, only time will tell. One can definitely say 2020 has been an adventure every day. So, you know, our department's ability to deliver programs and services is still very hindered by the governor's stay-at-home order and some of his social distancing mandates. We continue to operate in a phase-two model, but we're anxiously awaiting the passage into phase three, which is when barriers are removed for us and we can open back up a little bit more fully. Just this past week, happy to say, the governor has released some, and some restrictions on adult and youth athletics, as well as 5Ks and runs. So we're really hoping that that reopen trend continues. However, we're also fully aware that in the coming months, with the winter and the flus is approaching, that this may impact, obviously, our ability and our goals. So we definitely are rapidly adjusting our program portfolio to be able to operate successfully in a phase-two and phase-three world. So the remainder of this year and the first half probably of 21 will continue to show a reduced programming mix for our community. You know, we serve, we probably offer maybe 3,000 opportunities for our community, whether it's a class, an event, a league, a program, whatever drop-in. It's difficult to highlight exactly what that is. Obviously, we'll probably be offering around 2,700 to 2,600 opportunities, so it's more of a scale. We aren't necessarily eliminating wholesale type of program areas. We are hopeful that by summer of 21, we will be able to bring back events, summer camps and playgrounds, obviously, that are beloved by our community and very much needed. You know, if you all recall in May, when we did the COVID-19 economic cuts, the recreation department, our division, they permanently lost four and a half FTEs, as well as transitioned two of their FTEs to funding sources that are finite, which obviously isn't ideal and a short-term solution. You know, while we're grateful we weren't faced with additional reductions, this impact will influence programs and services and require a rebalancing of staff demands within the recreation division, which the team is working on now. So if you recall in February, you know, we came to the council with, all excited with our final recreation program plan, ready to, you know, shift into areas of new priority that the community highlighted. And at the same time, we also shared with the council that this particular division is significantly behind 08 recession levels. Not even this current recession, we're still trying to catch up, you know, from the 08 recession. Our population continues to grow. You've heard it from the community, this team and these types of services are very high in demand. You know, as a whole department, we are still 13 FTEs, now 18 FTEs behind where we were a few decades ago. You know, if you look in your budget book on page 11, the chart there shows changes in FTE staffing per capita for the entire city. So on an exercise using that same chart, I overlaid FTE staffing within the Parks Department for those exact same years, and the results are heartbreaking and definitely tell a story. So as always, I continue to urge you all to not just look at the current year's budget process, but also the accumulation of past budget and staffing decisions, and really ask ourselves, is the right balance achieved or not?
Julie, can I interrupt you really quickly? Councilmember Larmor, do you have a question before we go too far?
I do, actually. I was just curious, on the additional cleaning required for COVID, were we able to offset any of that or use the funds from CARES?
Yes, we have. And in addition, we've also used CARES funding to do, you know, plexiglass barriers, safe distance station, stations and, you know, signage, different things across not just City Hall campus, but the Commons, Riverbend, the courts, etc. So we've been accessing that source quite a bit. In addition, we've used a lot of CARES money to rethink about touchless faucets, touchless urinals, all those kind of things to just avoid any type of sanitation issue. So we've been tapping that as much as we possibly can as a resource to try and offset and not put that demand on the general fund.
Right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. You know, in our department, we continue to be reliant on both the very volatile and highly competitive general fund, although, you know, even half of our department are funded with other sources. It's just the two primary divisions on the general fund are Parks and Recreation. So it always creates such a burden sometimes. You know, I don't think anyone here envies the mayor's position when it comes to managing priorities and demands on each dollar that the city spend. You know, decisions made in May that have carried through into 21 and 22, they were deep. But while the mayor couldn't reverse those decisions for us, just because of the economic realities we're dealing with, she has continued to support the department where she could by allocating additional much-needed capital opportunity for our park system, which we'll talk about in a little bit, by focusing our funding on recovery and resilience, by creating a new human services opportunity fund, which we'll talk more about, and also keeping human services funding per capita whole, and by continuing to bolster our recreation scholarship funds, so that those that are still in economic recovery or challenges, they can participate and engage in programs for years to come. Very, very happy about that. In this current budget, is an increase in contribution to the Greater Kent Historic Society. This will put the city's operating contribution at around $100,000 annually. Prior, it was $60,000. We've obviously bumped that by 40. We also provide around another $100,000 in support from park operations and facility operations for the Brighter House Museum. That's all part of an existing MOU that was decades back. However, this year, we will begin the process of updating that MOU with this group and are also leading the effort on developing the first-ever long-range strategic plan. Very happy about that. So we're going to go through this process directly with the Historic Society. It's going to help us narrow down their programming focus, because right now it's so broad, it's just about the general history of Kent, not necessarily specific areas, and so we've really got to hone that in a little bit more. We're also going to study a lot of the backend business processes and needs, and really look at kind of financial operating pro forma moving forward, looking at also updating its operating approach and model. So we will definitely be focusing on two elements. One, the historic programming side of the house, the forward-facing, all the opportunities for the community to learn about the history of Kent and all that we have to offer. But at the second side, we also have to look at the historian role that keeps actual historic records for the city, which is something we rely on. So we've got kind of two angles that we're looking at here. So we will be working directly with that great volunteer group, their wonderful 501(c)(3) over there. They do most of the operating, if not the most, almost all of the operating support for the museum. So more to come to that for the council to understand a little bit more as we move forward on that project. We will be kicking it off by year end. Park Operations continues to manage the park system, pretty much current status quo, no major changes really moving into the 2122 year because of the economic impacts from May and moving forward through 2022. We will not be able to advance urban forestry program the way we wanted to, and will continue to manage our Green Kent program at the current minimum that we are now. But for the most part, no changes are really occurring in this area. It's actually one of our least restricted areas now, according to the governor's stay-at-home order, so that's helpful. And we are definitely seeing record-breaking use of our system. One of the things we are very excited about is to receive an ongoing allocation of 100,000 annually to focus our routine maintenance efforts on keeping the Mill Creek Canyon clean, once it's officially restored. I do know this was one of Councilmember Larmor's questions. You know, for us, it's critical that we continue to have a maintenance presence and a user use presence, visitors actually using the canyon. Otherwise, all of our cleanup efforts and costs could be wasted there. So having this direct source that is an isolated source that goes directly to this facility to keep this up and keep this used, hopefully will give comfort to the community that we have an active presence out there, because this is an incredible spot. So as you know, both Parks and Public Works, we really have been sharing with both the mayor and you all on council for many years, the impact transient camps have had in our public lands, and I'm super happy and grateful, and so is the team to be able to receive some funding so we can help counteract some of these impacts. So thank you for that. Facility operations will continue to operate as current status quo as well. No major changes in this area. They are pretty slammed right now with facility projects, both lifecycle and capital improvements. Last couple of years, we've actually gotten capital funding to begin supporting our facilities, so we are definitely keeping up on that. Also launching this year through summer 21, we are working on an updated 20-year citywide condition assessment and master plan. The focus of the plan is not on expanding the system. We understand the financial realities we're dealing with right now. It's more about maintaining and taking care of the current facility infrastructure we have today, and really thinking through strategic investments of where we need to actually put our money on our buildings to keep them lasting long into the future. RFPs have been submitted and reviewed, so we have consultant interviews this coming week. We will be sharing more with the council about this entire project and intent when we come to them with contract award and probably another month or so. So lots of exciting things happening there. And then wrapping it up with Riverbend Golf Course, they definitely have seen some challenges thrown their way this year with closures, no restaurant ability to operate, delayed construction on the driving range and more. But on the same time, they were also one of the first services that were able to reopen in the stay-at-home order. So we have literally seen ridiculous record-breaking attendance and use out there, so that has definitely helped. We were originally forecasting a half a million lost this year. We brought that way back, so very happy about that. The driving range is temporarily open right now for probably another month or so, and when it closes again for its final phase, which will do the extension of the 14 stalls towards Russell Road and also the merchandise center there improvement. So we are hoping to do an official grand opening with you all early second quarter of 21. In this particular area, as I mentioned earlier, the team has achieved many of its business plan goals. However, we were not able to achieve one of the key elements in the business plan. So bringing you way back to when we completed the business plan in 18 with Proz Consulting, one of the areas of analysis was benchmarking against six municipal golf courses, and it was discovered that Riverbend pays significantly higher in overhead charges than all six courses. You know, at the time, of course, it was a couple of years ago, the average overhead by our peers was around 200,000, but Riverbend's overhead was almost twice that amount. So it was agreed upon at the time when we built the entire eight-year pro forma to reflect a potential coming-soon reduction of city overhead allocation. You know, I think it was originally thought that by spreading out the overhead to all of the funds throughout the city and not select funds, that a drop would naturally occur for the golf course. I think unfortunately, when that city, when the city updated that plan, not only did the course not drop, overhead allocation increased by 11%. So unfortunately, you know, in the golf market, costs need to be passed on to the user via their rates and cost per round. So in order to stay competitive, we are really competing with public municipal courses that do not have equivalent financial mandates that Riverbend does, so they can actually price less. However, on the flip side, Riverbend is also the rate setter for South King County courses. So others model their rates off of ours. They always double-check what Riverbend's running, and then they price accordingly. And this actually gives a stronger market advantage to them, because they can price either below Riverbend or equal to Riverbend, but their profit margins are higher due to less expense. And so golf margins are just too tight to absorb the 100,000 annual impact in this case, which was why this was my number-one priority request for new funding consideration. It was initially not accepted. The burden to the general fund was just simply too high, and there is a reluctance to allow one-off concessions here and there to the cost allocation process and policy. So fair enough, totally understand that. However, we need a little time to make a little bit more of a strategic adjustment now that kind of the parameters have changed for the course. So after further discussion with the mayor's office, we have all agreed on a temporary stopgap until we can revise the business plan a little bit more effectively. So just back it up a little bit, on top of the 2.8 million we gave back in May, because we've had delayed hirings, we've had no programming, we have extended staff furloughs, we're actually forecasting to give back to the city another $700,000 to $800,000 of budget that we will not use by year end. Not that we don't need it, we just can't use it because of the situation we're in right now. So we actually are going to be using $200,000 of that additional savings that we're putting back into the general fund to offset the golf fund due to this lack of reduction in overhead, so we can match the business plan expectation. But to be clear, this is a one-time-only strategy. Cost allocation will continue to be a challenge at the course, simply because of the city's delayed true-up that they do every two years, so you're kind of up and down. It's very difficult to control the costs in a course when 15% of the cost, they either keep fluctuating or they're giving zero consistency. So it's a challenge that we're going to keep facing. Paula, the Finance Director and I are going to work together in the coming year to really update and look again at all of our industry benchmarks, and we're going to re-review the golf course operating model and consider the feasibility of transitioning it to a potential special revenue fund in the 2324 budget. We'll also know a little bit more with the driving range expansion and other influences, if we can keep it operating as an enterprise fund. So we are going to begin the business plan update in early 21, so look to see some updates on that coming soon.
I have a question really quick from Councilmember Larmor.
Thank you, Julie. So I just, maybe you're getting, you're getting there, but I'm just, remind me, why are expenses are twice that of our neighbors? Is it the, is it the investment in construction we're doing right now, or?
No, it's actually the cost allocation overhead process. I think every enterprise absolutely has an obligation to pay overhead. If they were an exclusive 100% business, they'd have to pay payroll, they'd have to, you know, recruit and market, etc. The question is what percent of allocation? And a lot of our surrounding cities don't have as aggressive and robust allocation process as we do, and so they don't, they aren't always impacted the same way that Riverbend is. Or they've made strategic choices to not do that to golf or things like that, considering it more of a subsidized program versus a for-profit. And so it's just different models for different cities.
Great, thank you.
So just a quick note, Half Lion out there continues to be a strong and resilient partner onsite. Obviously, their, their regular business is super strong. They've also, though, been hit pretty hard by COVID closure mandates. You know, they're only at a 50% capacity. You may hear later from Kurt, but a lot of the restaurants are stressing now that they've got to come indoors, because that really limits some of their ability to serve their customers. So we have been working with them over the past. So we have been working with them over the past few months on a waiver of rent in exchange for additional capital investment by Half Lion at the golf course. So not just waiving the rent for free, but actually in exchange for value that we will again maintain. We will be bringing that before the council for consideration prior to the end of the year. However, rest assured, we still feel very confident that Half Lion is the long-term partner we've been looking for. We just need to get through this pandemic together. So, you know, fingers crossed this all ends soon out there. And then finally, one more topic I need to get into a little bit of detail on and then I'll open it up to questions on our operating budget. But I do still have to get through a little bit of capital projects too. So as you know, many in our community, state and nation are calling for a, either a reinvestment or new investment in preventative-type programs. This is also a topic I know that interests many on the council. You know, in my opinion, Kent already does this and the mayor's budget continues to demonstrate her commitment and continued emphasis on a dedicated resource for social, human and preventative programs. I think the key question we really have to ask ourselves is what is the right balance for this need in parallel to all the rest of the needs of the city? You know, there's a lot of variance and interpretation of what a preventative program really is. And that really changes depending on what your community needs are. I've said this many times, it's actually even a specific topic and slide in my Kent civics 101 presentation. There's a fine line between social and public recreation programs. Many get confused with the word recreation and think that we don't play a role in human or social services. We absolutely do. There are two different professions and they do serve the community differently in different ways. However, many areas of public recreation achieve the goals of human and social and preventative programs. You know, the words social, human, preventative, et cetera, whatever current word we're using, they're really all words to describe programs, concepts or services that really help guide and support an individual's journey at some point throughout their lives in order for them to be successful. Some of those might be really critical at need support. Other things might be preventative in keeping people on the right track in life. To put that into context, you know, first, you know, an individual, think of yourselves personally, seek basic human need. We're talking about personal safety, housing and shelter, food, employment. We need to make sure that we personally are taken care of first. After that, when all of that is stable, we then transition to more psychological need, which is more about belonging and relationships and love and connection, accomplishments, all that good stuff. We then keep on that continuum and then we seek more personal self-fulfillment such as fitness, wellness, art, creativity and music, learning new skills, travel and so on. So at any one point in an individual's journey, they may need help achieving any one of these things in any one of these timeframes. So some might need help because of racial barriers. Some might need help because of economic circumstances or health circumstances. At times, help or support might be needed to create friendships or connections or to learn new skills or helping with their aging parents or younger children. All of this is really meant to help the individual themselves in some way, shape or form. Human services and public recreation really do work together in tandem because an individual will not seek out psychological or self-fulfillment needs until basic need is met. And that's where we come in as what we do. You know, we approach these programs and services in multiple ways. You know, some we deliver directly through city government and paid staff. Others, we partner with or help fund community organizations who do serve a specific subset of our residents or they might have special interests or serve like specific niches or even accommodation of all three. I think this is a concept that actually came up during our update to the Human Services Master Plan. You know, in Kent, for some reason, it historically separated human services from the rest of the city government in regards to delivering human, social and preventative programs. The Human Services Division itself does not deliver any direct programs to the community with the exception of the home repair program. You know, and I remember trying to determine whether I should request an increase in our human services per capita funding from the mayor, but then really began asking the question, how can we do that when we don't specifically highlight all of the programs spent in this preventative area? Only the per capita funding? So at the time I brought this up to the mayor and told her I couldn't really recommend increased funding until I had a solid grasp on existing baseline funding. Only then could she really make an informed decision based on actual data. So even when comparing our per capita funding with other agencies, it's very complicated because it include, all of it varies from city to city. For example, we historically have not included our senior center in our human services kind of per capita analytic that we usually do when we compare ourselves to other cities, yet in Bellevue, they do. And this varies greatly. So it's really a unique question that each city must ask themselves based on their own circumstances and needs of their own community. So during the update to the Human Services Master Plan earlier in the year, it was estimated at that time that around 30 to 35% of Kent's population might need crisis or supportive help at one point in their lives, typically with the basic need type of level. This group is likely living paycheck to paycheck. They have lower health outcomes, maybe increased stress or anxiety due to their situations. That 30 to 35% was pre-COVID and that was our kind of best estimate at the time. In conversations with Marina now, obviously, short-term, that's probably more about half our community is at that crisis type of level. Services of support may include behavioral health, emergency support, employment, domestic violence, all that stuff. These services are mostly contracted out and supported by our community partners via the Human Services Per Capita Grant Funding Application Process and some CDBG support as well as some additional programs, which we'll get into. The other percentage of population engage in other types of preventative programs that we offer on a regular basis such as senior programs, youth programs, potential intervention programs when a person might be going off track. These types of programs are provided for by Kent Parks and Recreation, the Kent Police Department and obviously others in our community. So these foundational programs should try to remain as constant as possible because if you think about it, if the preventative foundation crumbles, you know, that 30 to 35% of our community could grow exponentially and we want to try and avoid that by keeping that baseline strong. So you all know me and I could easily make an argument that pretty much everything we do in Parks and Recreation directly supports basic psychological or self-fulfillment needs. However, I'm going to be ultra-conservative and fair and we are using the updated goals of the Human Services Strategic Plan that we just used as a criteria of what we would actually include in this analysis for you all. So you all will find in your packet a document we put together that kind of looks like this. You guys I think have it in your attachments. It really will help visualize and explain a little bit the differences of what we actually do here at the city in regards to human, social and preventative programs. It does span multiple departments. In this spreadsheet, the far right, there's green columns. These are the new Human Services Strategic Plan Goals for the Human Services Strategic Plan, which is focusing on best starts for kids, protection of Kent's aging population, support for health and wellness overall, all of our residents. And then of course, the need for stable housing in Kent. On top of that, just for fun, we added kind of this middle column here. It's kind of the orange column that's actually called Key Focus Areas. This also will give the council a little bit of understanding of which segment areas are we supporting? Anything from behavioral health to childcare to employment services, food security, immigrant refugee services, micro enterprise and so on. You get the gist. Then on the far left, we worked with our colleagues across the city and broke out into categories, each area and their funding source and dollar amounts so you could really get a clear picture. So you'll see the first few rows of this spreadsheet are really focused only on the Human Services Per Capita Funding and the grants that we award and pass directly to our community partners. That averages around 1.2 million a year. We then highlighted several programs that the city offers to those in need or for protection of those types of populations such as home repair programs, scholarship programs, rental inspection program, public defense funding, all of that stuff that is meant to actually serve and support our community. That type of function is averaging around 3.4 million. And then we shift our focus to the preventative program side of the house, which is mostly recreation and police. These programs average around 3.1 million annually. And then finally, we highlighted all the one-time funding that came in as part of CARES and COVID response funding. We intentionally left out any funding in the spreadsheet that was utilized directly for the city and only highlighted funding that passed through to our community. So there is still CARES money available. We still are working through some of that that's available. But this particular document, we wanted to make sure was as pure as possible to what we actually give and provide to the community.
Julie, sorry to interrupt, but Councilmember Larmour has a question. I'm guessing it's human services.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, thank you, Julie. So Julie, you'd said 30 to 35% of our community operating crisis. I just want to be clear that that's our community. We're not talking about like, you know, people we come in contact with. Does that, that's a statistic based on our 130,000 populace?
Yes, you're right.
Okay, so third of our city is operating and needs at this level.
Actually, and probably more right now, Councilmember Larmour. That's kind of the historic average. And even again, that's just based on what we know in our community. There's no real understanding of how. It's higher than that currently right now, but it will eventually hopefully scale back down.
And then a question or an ask, I guess, when I was looking at this worksheet, this is really helpful. Thank you for producing this. But I have one more ask. I'd really like to see in those key focus area columns, like what is our investment if we were to add up every X in behavioral health? You know, why did, so if, I figure you guys have all the numbers and formulas on this in Excel somewhere. Is there a way to total that? So we know that, you know, X dollars are being spent in mental health, X are being spent in childcare, really.
I mean, we could, it definitely would take some time to do it. One of the challenges we have is there's certain functions that actually span multiple areas, which you can see on that chart. So we would have to make a call at that point on the primary function and allow some of the secondary and tertiary functions to just not be there. Otherwise, it'd just be based on formula. But it will take some time to actually do that. So it's not something I could produce right this second, but we certainly can get a little bit more stronger in how we report this type of thing for sure.
Thank you. Thanks, Julie.
So wrapping it up here, you know, if you scroll all the way down to the bottom, you know, you can see in 2020, we did spend around 11 million for our community in social, human and preventative programs. A lot of that, or a big chunk of that included one-time funding, about 2 million-ish. On a normal historic year, which you can look at 2122, we do average around 7.5 million to 8 million annually. So as you can see, I think, now that you can see it all in writing, we definitely spend much more on this type of function than what we have typically always kind of thought of is that 1 million of per capita funding. That per capita funding is really a pass-through that goes right up to the community. So I would always think of per capita funding as going right to community partners. Some of the rest of the funding in this sources are directly delivered by city government, but that does not make it any less of a social or human service program. It just is we're delivering it direct versus contracting or granting out to our community, if that makes sense. So really, the question, I think, the council and we all must ask ourselves, is this the right dollar amount? You know, is additional investment needed? If so, where would we invest? You know, the basic needs portion via human services per capita? Should we offer more preventative programs on the continuum for kids and families or seniors? Maybe more in specific key focus areas? Some of the challenges we also face too is do we actually have community partners that have the capacity to actually manage more? A lot of them are struggling right now also operating their organizations in here. And so these are all just questions we've got to ask ourselves. So in addition to the continued protection and support of these baseline programs by the mayor, she also allocated funding for the establishment of the new Human Services Opportunity Fund. You know, this also came up during the update of the Human Services Strategic Plan. Some of the struggles that we've always faced is once the council approves the per capita funding for our community grant awards, pretty much we're locked down until 2022. You know, what if something comes up in 21 or, you know, in 22? And so this gives us an opportunity, beginning in 22, to really create this test pilot where we can begin working through any emerging or new trends that are coming up or working with our community on helping create innovative or other grassroots projects. Whereas before, we didn't really have that opportunity. One of the things before I wrap up here on this topic is we do have to consider the capacity and the ability of our community to utilize any more of this opportunity fund or additional funding. But we also need to think of the Human Services Division themselves. They are also struggling immensely with staff capacity challenges. You know, we did put in, you'll see on our document, for an additional FTE in this division, but ultimately, we were just not successful. Currently, there are really only three FTEs that provide support for the CDBG program, the Human Services Application Grant Funding Process, as well as sitting on over 25 regional, subregional, county or other community tables. They're an over-spumped division and they are trying also to spend and pass through as much CARES funding and increased CDBG COVID funding to our community as possible. So if the council is considering any additional needs or resources in this area, I really urge you to also consider additional staffing assistance to actually support that. So that's my kind of final thoughts on there. So thanks for bearing with me. That's all there is to share on this one. Lots of info early in the morning. Is there any questions on the operating whole picture? And then I just need about 10 minutes for capital and then I will wrap up. So I'll pass this back to you, Council President.
Thank you so much, Julie. Councilmember Boyce, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, a lot of accomplishment. Good job. I think for me, that Riverbend inner fund, you know, when we first came on the council in 2022, that was a really big drain to the general fund. So I'm happy to see that kind of be able to sustain. Not today, but I would ask the, maybe the council president, I would like to understand a little bit more about the allocation of overhead golf course. I'd like to have a deeper conversation in that because like we saw one problem, but then in the front, we've got another problem in front of us. So I need, like, have more information on that so see what we can do to try to make that sustainable. And also Half Lion, they are a great organization and I like the fact that we need to make sure we partner with them, you know, and yet still hold them accountable for as well as, you know, to give and take, give and take. We would like to be able to see them stay there. Good group, good organization, provide a good service. So I want to make sure we keep that in mind as we move forward. So but overall, great presentation, but definitely want more information around the allocation of the golf fund.
I've made a note of that.
Great, thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Thomas, you are next.
Thank you, Madam President. So Julie, there seems to be a hesitation within our city to not install more of the schools' own cameras and yet the benefit of revenue over expense is amazing. Is, can you explain that?
I actually, Councilmember Thomas, that's actually not my area that I don't, we don't receive or see any of that funding. So I'd have to pass that to the Finance Director, Paula, to answer.
Yeah, I just wondered if anybody could answer that for hesitation. Is Paula still with us?
Yep, I'm still here. I can only speak from the financial side. I do know that the police chief is going to be giving his presentation and it's very likely that that part will be included in his presentation. So if we could hold tight until he can join us and I know he's on here, but we can maybe discuss it at that point.
So you want me to hang on to that question, Madam President, or can Chief answer it?
Councilmember Thomas, if we can just, I will make a note of it as well. And then let's wait and ask that question. I believe we have Chief Padilla coming up a little later before lunchtime. So if you don't mind, I think that would be great.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Julie, you had mentioned that it was hard coming up with some of your achievements. So I just wanted to say that I was very appreciative of all the work. Your, part of your COVID response, the presence online that you had with, you know, the science experiment. you know, the science experiments, the games, the tournaments, all of that sort of stuff. I found, you know, I even used some of it with my grandkids. So I really appreciated that being available to the community. And so I also appreciated that even though some of the folks were not actively working at, at the time or furloughed, a lot of your team still showed up for packing hand sanitizer and packing the mask, so their outreach to the community. So I really appreciate that. This is a great chart that you put together and it's going to be very helpful. And I also would like to second Councilmember Boyce's request for the information, the breakdown on the internal cost for the driving range in comparison to those other cities that you had reached out to. So I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for saying that. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for the presentation, Julie. And I just want to echo the other council members and yourself. And I still know that the recreation employees are in furlough and I know that these are really tough times for them. So I appreciate them being at that event as well and still working hard. You mentioned at an earlier meeting that the lifeguards at Lake Meridian weren't going to be funded. Can you speak to that?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Michelle. Uh, one of the issues that we had, which you read, I didn't really go into a lot of detail. In the original nineteen twenty budget, we had pretty significant reduction targets we had to hit. I was reluctant to actually reduce programs in twenty twenty before I had the Recreation Program Plan completed. I wanted to actually understand community priorities first before I reduced. So at the time, the mayor allowed me to put in just a straight negative one hundred thousand dollars in our budget that eventually would be distributed to line items and so on. Pre-COVID, when we were all running really strong and we were on a great trajectory, I did request actually not have to cut that one hundred thousand dollars and then reinvest it into community programs. At the time, it was kind of a wait and see how we did and if we needed the funding and that we would address that, that hundred thousand in the night, in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Then COVID hit. Then we had to actually reduce even more. And the Recreation Division specifically got impacted quite heavily simply because of the stay at home order and the limits that we were allowed to actually deliver programs. So very stressing, I already pretty much dove deep into the Recreation Division to then have to cut another one hundred thousand dollars was very stressing for me. So I requested it as my number two priority to be reconsidered for funding. That got denied. And so one of the things that I had to consider is what do I do now and how do I cut another hundred thousand of services? So my options were to either lay off additional staff, which then impacted hundred programs, or continue with a reduced presence at the Lake Meridian Park and the beach. The beach program that we have out there is one hundred percent subsidized, meaning there is no revenue impact if the service goes away. And so we have agreed on a temporary option with the mayor that we will look towards high lifeguarding during weekends and high peak areas and then reevaluate during the mid-mayanum adjustments. So in twenty twenty, there was no lifeguarded beach at Lake Meridian. It was obviously open. It was a swim at your own risk. Again, just a reminder to everybody is that pretty much, what, ten months out of the year, that beach and the lake is unlifeguarded. We only come in typically historically in the summer and deliver lifeguarded opportunities because the demand, you know, jumps a little bit. And so in twenty twenty, that was a COVID reduction and we did not have it in twenty twenty. We are recommending a reduced option in twenty-one, twenty-two. And then we'll take a look at it at mid-mayanum. So that is what's on the table right now. Finish your question?
Just to clarify, so there will be lifeguards during weekends and high peak times?
Weekends, and then if there's a holiday weekend, you know, like the Fourth of July, we may look at that. It will be a challenge. It's going to be very difficult to find lifeguards to do only weekend work, but we're going to continue to work through that and see what we can come up with as kind of a reduced model out there, but not completely walking away. So we're still working through some of that.
So can you tell me how much money there is for lifeguards right now in this proposed budget?
Yep. Typically, we spend around a hundred thousand dollars for a full two month program currently right now. That's half. So I'm bringing in, I have about fifty thousand now for that program.
Sorry to jump in, Council President, but I don't have a way to raise my hand. I just want to assure the council that lifeguarding is very important to the mayor and that she remains committed to operating that program in the future.
Thank you, Derek. All right, Councilmember Michelle, do you have any additional questions about that?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Larmour.
Um, yeah, so actually I have two, I had a different question, but I want to start with the lifeguard issue since that's come up since my question. I want to appeal to the mayor and my fellow council members that we find that additional fifty thousand. I just think it's a huge risk to our community to not have lifeguards during the week, during a hot summer, you know. Teens or tweens, they don't care if it's and I just think it's too much of a risk. And I do think it's also an equity issue. We, you know, have a lot of communities of color living in that area and a lot of this, you know, the swimmers, the lockover from the apartments across the street. And I just think it is, it's just too risky. Yeah, I, we've got to find a way to fund this back to the same levels. It's just a safety issue and I think a liability too. So that was that on lifeguards. My other question was, I wanted to, and Julie, I don't know if this is for you or it's probably part your team and part the chief, but we spend a considerable amount in preventative programs between, between parks and the police. And how do we know we're reaching the right kids? How do we know we're reaching the right programs? I know that I look at some of the, you know, the photos and from some of the programs in the past couple of years, then it doesn't necessarily, those kids don't always reflect our community that are in the photos. And so I just want, I want to appeal that we take a closer look at these programs and decide, are we reaching the right, the right youth in our community that need the help and support and are, you know, in that thirty percent or to fall into that thirty percent? And how do we, you know, maybe, how do we innovate, maybe find programs or, you know, that serve them better or revise some of these programs to serve those communities better? So I think my ask is just a deeper dive into our preventative programs and if they're really addressing the needs of our community.
Awesome. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Larmour. I, you know, I can't speak for the chief. I'll let him highlight that during his area. One of the things that we do look at, though, we are very close and engaged with our school systems. We program in a lot of our elementary schools and our middle schools. We also, even on this latest Recreation Program Plan, we did engagement and outreach in specific areas, including youth, not just with youth themselves, but also youth providers. In addition, we also did a lot of equity analysis in regards to race. So I know now every race, what their interests are and what their needs are. I know every financial demographic, you know, what those that make over a hundred thousand in our community are really looking at for programs and what those that are in the lower income brackets need for programs. I also respectfully disagree. I think that we very much serve an extremely diverse community, obviously, because most of our participants are our community and they are diverse. So one of the things we do look at in alignment with all of our plans and guidance is outside plans as well. So we do pay a lot of attention to school district strategic plans and so on. We are very engaged in senior needs and are actually diving deeper with a senior needs assessment as part of the Kent County levy work. So that's going to bring it right down to that. We are looking at senior populations and bringing in a more diverse mix in our senior programs. So we are doing a lot of work. The challenge, I think, with what we do with where you're saying is how do you measure whether you are directly influencing community outcomes? And that's a bear we just have not tackled yet. And I, it is on my list. I plan to. The goal here first is to get some of the vision established, then begin to develop a performance matrix to actually see how we're moving forward and advancing some of these community outcomes. So I believe we're one hundred percent aligned and we're just going to need some time to get there.
Thank you for that clarification, Julie. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Julie, for the presentation. Um, my question, I will, I just kind of want to reiterate what Councilmember Larmour said about lifeguards. I believe they're very important and we should be looking for fifty thousand dollars in our budget somewhere because a lot of people who go to the lakes are usually communities of color during their days off. And some of these kids don't know how to swim. So that's something we should be investing in. That's, that's, seems like a public safety issue to me. And my other, basically just a kind of a comment is looking forward to having a conversation on Green Kent Park Program, Julie. Whenever you have time, so we can have a conversation about bringing that back and what that new program is going to look like. Because that's been kind of been on my plate for the past three years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyce, I see your hand up. But Madam Mayor, did you want to respond to this?
I do. I just, somehow there's gotten to be a misconception out there that the lifeguard program is not a priority. And through all of this budget conversations, both Derek and myself have talked about the fact that we have to have lifeguards out at the lake. So I, I don't know, I don't know where this sort of went sideways, but there will be lifeguards at the lake going forward without question.
Thank you, Madam. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you. And thank you for that comment, Madam Mayor, as well, too. Get back to what Councilmember Larmour was saying about reaching the diverse program and making sure we are doing that. I think our biggest partnership with that would be the school, right? I mean, that's where most of our kids at. I'm not sure that I would support a different program to make sure we reach our diverse population. But I think maybe a better working relationship with the school, because that's where the kids are at, right? So and how we communicate and get that information out, then we can pull those kids in. But wouldn't necessarily, I don't think we need another program. I just think it's getting around to communication. And the biggest partner that I see is definitely the school, because that's where the kids at. I just want to throw that out to you, Councilmember Larmour. And I think that's something that we probably can dig into.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. All right, I see Councilmember Fincher's hand is up.
I just wanted to add in that there are a number of community, of organizations in the community that work with some of our communities of color and other represented groups that I don't see on the list. But we could make sure that they're known to both the city and that the organizations are aware of the grant opportunities from the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher, for that comment. I don't see any other hands up at this point. Anybody else have questions? Julie, I don't think you're done. Is that correct?
Three of my life. No, not yet. Close, close.
All right, we've got a couple more minutes. So why don't you go ahead and continue?
Well, and I'll, I'll let you all lead if you have any major questions. I think in this case, first, I just want to thank the mayor and the council for continuing to invest in our capital program. It has been almost non-existent prior to twenty nineteen. So I'm very, very grateful and happy that in these last two budget processes, we have actually seen, if not quite a bit, if not the majority of the capital funding. So you will start, begin to see lots of cool improvements. If you have not already, they're out there in the community. And so highlighting, it's a little weird in parks, I've shared before, every year we kind of get new funding allocation and we put that budget aside and we have to keep saving every year until we finally have, you know, three or four million to actually deliver the project. So what you see on the capital worksheet in front of you is the new funding we received. Not necessarily all the projects we're actually going to deliver in twenty-one, twenty-two, because some have actually reached that point now where we're actually able to deliver the program. Reminder to both the council and listeners that we do have separate lifecycle programs for both facilities and parks. There, that is a different type of function from actual capital improvement. I would think of when you look at lifecycle is really more fixing of specific components or elements within a park. We might go in and resurface a parking lot or redo maybe play equipment elements or things like that. Capital improvement is actually giving multiple areas in the park all at once, an entire facelift. So they're, they're a little bit different approach and strategy, even though they do overlap. So those are still continuing in both facilities and parks. Looking at the new funding we just received, not necessarily just to receive, we did have additional opportunity at the driving range because of the sale of the par three to continue to invest in capital. So thank you to our ECD partners for making that happen for us. Almost finished with the driving range. We still are rolling into twenty-one on that. At the same time, we also are activating some of our other course improvements, like our on-course restrooms, our cart paths, repaving bunker sand, et cetera. Won't bore you there. It's all in writing. The facility side of the house, as I mentioned, is definitely going to be busy this year. They are, got new allocation funding for the senior center roof. Some of the new projects that Chief Padilla will highlight later are actually going to be overseen also by facilities. It's just a funding source in a different area. So they're definitely going to be hopping because they are still working on the twenty allocation improvements of the Kent Police Department improvements, the Kent Commons and the Senior Center improvements. So lots of activity going on in facilities. I did want to spend a little time on Keehawke, which of course is the acronym for the Kent East Hill Operations Center. And that is up, I think, geez, maybe two years ago, three. I, now I, it's a whole blur. I came to the city council because we kind of brushed off that whole operating plan of the challenge of our kind of bursting at the seams shop at Russell Road. We also have such a wonderful space and spot up at East Hill. Our mayor is still very interested in how do we advance some of that opportunity that we have out there. So we have two things we're doing. One is a feasibility study to begin really looking at not just spending, you know, sixty million on a brand new operations center, but how can we phase our way in there to be able to help us? So what's the first thing we need to do? What's the second thing? And what are the most critical things? So this, the feasibility study is really going to take that larger study and start breaking it down into more manageable chunks for us. At the same time, though, we definitely have challenges out there at East Hill. We are bursting out the seams at East Hill. We have very old dilapidated trailers. We have restrooms pigeonholed in between our trailers. We need some improvement to increase efficiency out there. That's what you'll see on the actual East Hill Operation Improvement Park. Excuse me, I've been talking too much this morning. On the park side of the house, new funding. We did receive the remainder of the funding, as you probably noticed if you came into City Hall lately with the new roundabout. Excuse me. The new linear path on the way in, we do have now funding to complete that landscape project. We got additional funding for Kent Memorial Park. Side note on this one, we do have grants, sorry, excuse me, we do have grants affiliated with this and we are starting this project in twenty-one. We have some Kent Valley Loop Trail improvements. We are improving and starting additional work at Mill Creek Canyon and Earthworks. And I'm happy to say we got additional money for Mill Creek Canyon Revitalization. This is to continue the effort of the work that we're doing right now. We got some initial funding that we started to see what we could do and how far that could take us. We now have additional sources that will begin allowing us to bring the trail and the clear use all the way down to actual Earthworks Park now to be able to have opportunities going up and down there. So I don't want to belabor capital too much. I just want everybody to know I'm super grateful. The team is grateful. And hopefully the community will start seeing some really neat features coming in in their park system out there today. So be happy to answer any questions. I'm just trying to be respectful of time for you all.
Thank you, Julie. And I appreciate that. We're a little bit off track, but hopefully we can catch up as we move through. Councilmember Larmour, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, can somebody clarify for me? I've, I've been a little confused. And maybe it's just I'm seeing different acronyms and different names. Keehawke. Okay, so East Hill Shops is different from East Hill Operations?
No, they're the same thing.
Okay. And that is primarily, that's Parks Operations.
Yes, and then Public Works does use it on and off, either for storage or for stop-in opportunities, but they don't typically have an everyday presence there.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Julie on the capital presentation part? Councilmember Boyce, you have your mic off. Did you have a question?
Yeah, good question. I just, once again, I want to make, this is not just about the capital, but I just want to all on the same page around the lifeguard, right? Because I think, I think what I heard from the mayor that there will be lifeguards. Sometimes things could take off in a different direction. I want to, it doesn't get blown up that we won't have lifeguard, but I want to just kind of reiterate the mayor statement saying that we will have lifeguard. statement saying that we will have lifeguard for there for our kids, I think that's what I heard and uh I just want to make sure we're all on the same page regarding that, that is a very sensitive matter and I agree with the team, you know, around making sure we have people there equity issues and all those type things as well, so that was it, just want to make a comment.
Thank you, Councillor Voice. Councillor Michelle?
Thank you, Council President, I appreciate that, uh Councillor Voice, I'm trying to clarify it too because it sounds to me like it's being cut by half, so I'm just trying to figure out like when we're going to have lifeguards there and how we're still cutting it by half.
Uh it's something I guess we're have to figure out, working, we'll have to work it through. Sounds um I I think we all agree too, it's a an important program, I think our challenge is we cut so heavily in so many areas, there just isn't a lot of movement, so I definitely will work absolutely with the mayor and try and work through her uh end goal on this and we'll make it happen.
Uh Madam Mayor, I don't I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I I think is we need clarity around this here, I just don't want things to get blown up, uh can you um say that we will have lifeguard protection?
We'll have lifeguards at Lake Ridian, period.
Seven days a week during the peak season, though?
So we can work out the schedule, I support that we have lifeguards there on a similar program to what we've had before.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council President, can I?
Yes, please continue.
Um, okay, so maybe during the biannual uh budget adjustment, maybe we can find some money there for the next year and we use the full amount this year. I don't know.
I think that's all great ideas, Councillor Michelle, and uh definitely I'll work with the mayor and making sure we can make it happen.
I think what I heard Madam Mayor say, we will have.
It will happen.
We will make it happen.
So I don't think there the probably be safe to say you're not going to see anything different than what you saw last year, I mean, I think that's what we are saying here.
Uh twenty nineteen, you mean, because twenty twenty we did not have.
Had no lifeguards in twenty twenty, but that was COVID, so.
But we'll work it through, rest assured.
All right, Councillor Lomar, did your question get answered?
Yes, it did, thank you.
All right, so any other additional questions? And Julie, um thank you so much for this presentation, I know some of the council members had questions on the list and I am guessing that um there will be follow-up on some of those as far as the sheet that we have. Um is that the end of your presentation? I don't want to cut you off before we move on.
It is unless anybody needs me, I answered quite a bit of the questions in my presentation today, but I'll also give a little bit more of a written answer too, and I'll pass that through to Finance uh and Paula for them to send back out to you all.
I would appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Julie, and have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on, I'd like to welcome Margaret to talk for a few minutes about the municipal court.
Good morning.
Good morning.
With my all my budget buttons here. Um good morning, I'm Margaret Yatter, the Court Administrator, um and I wanted to talk about, highlight a few of our accomplishments first. Um first being um a complete transition to Laserfish for our document management. As you may recall, we implemented O-Court um in June of two thousand and nineteen, and with this program, we went to all electronic forms. At the same time that we went to O-Court, we transitioned to Laserfish to allow all the electronic forms from O-Court to be stored in Laserfish as opposed to printing them out and then scanning them later, so um that was a smooth transition in June of two thousand and nineteen, and I am happy to say that as of last month, all of our court files have now been scanned into Laserfish. This includes our open and our closed files. It was a huge project, um I wanted to give a big thank you to Mike and his staff from IT for all of their help, so that was a huge, huge win for us. Um next, we, I want to talk about DUI Court, we have had fifteen graduates from our DUI Court. We have another three scheduled to graduate before the end of this year, so that would be eighteen total by the end of twenty twenty. And the last, I wanted to talk a little bit more in detail about how um we reopened during the COVID nineteen pandemic. We are very proud of this process that we went through. As you guys are aware, the court was closed from March seventeenth through June first. When we reopened on June second, we had all the safety protocols in place. Upon entrance to the court, we have temperatures being taken, masks are required and provided if you do not have one. And everyone is directed to a hand sanitizer station right after they go through security. We have social distancing designations throughout the lobby and the courtrooms. And a big thank you to Alex and his team and facilities, they installed Plexiglas throughout the court and probation. And they also marked our lobby and courtrooms for social distancing, showing everyone where they can stand or sit to um keep the six feet distance. We, as part of the reopening, we implemented social distancing calendars and that limits us to ten people in each courtroom at a time. So we can only use two of our four courtrooms for calendars because we allow the other two courtrooms to be used for attorneys and their clients to meet, so that they can keep the social distancing. So we had to get creative to address all of our canceled hearings during our closure. We had over four thousand hearings that were canceled while we were closed from March seventeenth through June first. So in addition to our social distancing calendars, we also have Zoom calendars, we have telephonic hearings. We implemented night court calendars for our traffic infractions, those are happening on October and November. So while it's been a challenge, the pandemic has presented opportunities for us to reimagine what court looks like. So all of these new ways of doing court hearings has really been, I think, what's going to kind of become the new norm. So we're continuing to meet with all the parties, the attorneys and all the other um court partners to explore innovative ways to handle our case load with this new normal. So I just wanted to say we did have our first jury trial since the pandemic last month. And we moved our jury orientation into an online process instead of having, you know, a group of jurors show up for an orientation and watching a video, we used to have sixty-plus jurors in the courthouse for orientation, we moved it all online. So when we got ready for a trial, we called in twenty jurors and used two courtrooms to select the jury panel to maintain the social distancing. It all went very well, I would say the only complaint from jurors was that sitting on the hard benches in the courtroom for too long was not very comfortable. So we've worked and ordered seat cushions, they're supposed to be here next week, so we'll be ready. So and the court staff have been amazing during all of this. Um working with our prosecutors, public defenders, court security, jail, everybody has been really great, I'm very proud of everybody that they're following the protocols and working hard to keep each other safe. Um I just appreciate everyone's cooperation during this process. So moving on to our funding sources, the court is a hundred percent general fund, except we have one position that's funded from the red light camera funds that started in September of two thousand and nineteen. Our base operating services are the municipal court services and probation, so like I stated, the court operates two full-time courtrooms, Monday through Friday. We used to add additional calendars in the other courtrooms quite often, but now that, like I stated, is Zoom or telephonic hearings or night court. Uh we process all cases filed, that includes criminal filings as well as traffic infractions, parking, non-traffic civil infractions, civil protection orders, impound hearings and photo enforcement tickets. Our probation service monitors compliance with conditions of sentence and deferred prosecutions for all the cases that are signed by the court. And then our probation serves as a liaison between the court and the offenders, and they appear in court um usually once a week to do that. We do not have any additional requests for this year or for this budget. So that is it for the court, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you so much, Margaret. Lot going on and you guys have done a great job dealing with um an unusual situation.
Thank you.
Um any questions for Margaret? All right, I oh, I see Councillor Core.
Thank you, thank you, Margaret, for the presentation. Quick question, are the D um DUI Court classes that you have, are they done online right now?
Um I was referring to our DUI Court participants, it's not classes.
Okay.
The hearing. Are you talking about the hearing that we're having?
I'm talking about, I was sorry, I'm talking about the graduates you have in the program.
Yeah, so we've done those calendars via Zoom, we actually started back with DUI Court before we opened to the public.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
Those hearings were held via Zoom and our probation officer that meets with the individuals had been having individual appointments via Zoom.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much, Margaret, for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
We are going to move on, I'd like to welcome Pat Fitzpatrick. Um Pat, you've got about ten minutes and then we'll take a quick break, so just so everyone knows, we are going to take a break here in a couple minutes.
Good morning, everybody, I'm not going to take your ten minutes, I'm going to try to help us catch up on time a little bit here, so um just real quick, I want to talk about um our accomplishments. Um so, so you know, as you know, uh the legal civil division is behind most of what comes before council, uh big projects, larger contracts, etcetera, we're kind of the the uh people in the background, making sure that uh we're in compliance with all the uh legal requirements. But this year, um the the standout projects are the two twenty eighth, two twenty fourth corridor. Um as Dad knows, we had a significant number of property owners uh that uh were objectionable to some aspects of that project, and we had to help uh Public Works navigate a number of property issues. Um we provided extensive advice and work on the native assemblage uh sale process. Um we established the protocols for officer-involved uses of deadly force for all of South King County, uh the the VIIT program. Uh and we were uh one of the first in the state uh to to come into compliance with state law in that regard. Um we uh assisted, um as you recall, it seems like forever ago, but the Rally the Valley Moratorium and Ordnance was a pretty tense moment for the council and uh we were, we worked very hard on that program. Um we have negotiated various inter-local agreements with King County uh for the uh Russell Road Levy Project. Um and uh and then there's COVID nineteen. Um we have uh been on point for interpreting governor proclamations, limitations, uh assisting HR and navigating the workplace rules that are that are in play, um open public meetings, uh issues that have come up, etcetera, so um our our department on the civil side has been in the background of that process. On the prosecution side, of course, it's been a very interesting year as Margaret described. Um we had uh toward the beginning of the year, fully started implementing the body worn camera program into our prosecution. Um and and as you know, we're one of the few agencies in the state of Washington who uses body worn cameras, so there's not a very good template on how to utilize these in criminal prosecution, so uh we navigated through that process, uh and then when kind of COVID nineteen hit, we had to refine it a bit. Uh but we've now incorporated it into our case review process, into our discovery process, meaning um sharing those videos, which is not an easy task when these videos are a maze, uh they're they're massive uh data uh files, so that was a bit of a challenge. Um and we have uh refined our electronic filing system with the court, um all made necessary by the COVID nineteen, as you recall, we lost uh a point eight employee, so um five, essentially five percent of our staff uh in the COVID nineteen cut. And as Margaret indicated, we have a a massive bubble of cases that we're going to need to uh work through in the coming months. Um it's going to be a significant challenge for our office. Uh we have to figure out how to negotiate cases. Um what we're seeing right now is um a push for trials on a lot of cases. Um and it puts us in a really hard position because there is no way that we can handle um a a massive bubble of trials like that, we just don't have, our our city doesn't have the capacity to do that, so we're trying to get creative. Uh we're in the process of figuring out how we're going to handle that uh process and um more to come on that in the coming months. Um I I do want to thank Margaret, um her staff has been awesome, uh the court was one of the first uh to hold a trial, not the first, but one of the first. So we were very out in front of this and forward-thinking on how we could, you know, work toward a a normal on that, so and in the process I haven't had a single employee who's had been COVID positive, uh we've had a couple of scares, of course, but we've done a very good job of managing um through that process. My staff has also been very um uh flexible in their work. Um just so you know, the prosecutors um are not allowed to come to the office for at least a week after they appear in court, and we have them appearing in court on a rotational shift basis, just to ensure that um I do have four staff that have to be in the office because of secure computer systems that they cannot access at home, so um so we've been navigating through that, we're doing well. Um and that's about it, we are not uh requesting any new funding for the next year, no capital projects, etcetera, so that's what I have, if you have any questions, uh feel free to to fire away.
Thank you, Pat, any questions for Pat? Councillor Voice, you have your mic off.
Thank you, um Madam President, I just want to make a comment, I mean, you look at uh Pat and his department is a very small department, I don't know what it's compared to, is your peers, but uh you have a very uh dynamic team, you guys do a lot of work, so just a comment to your leadership and to your team, uh just with the work you guys, incredible amount of work you guys get to do, thank you.
Uh well, thank you, Councillor Voice, I do, I can tell you that um compared to Seattle, we have about half of the attorneys on a per capita basis. And we are small, um I do fortunately have some really high-powered, I, you know, highly committed attorneys in my office, so it it worked.
Thank you, Pat, well said, Councillor Voice. Any other questions? All right, so that brings us to a little break on our agenda, it is um about ten oh seven according to my clock, so let's go ahead if everyone is okay. Um if we come back at ten twenty, that gives you a little over ten minutes to just take a couple minutes. Um if you don't mind, um just go ahead and turn off your camera, make sure your mics are muted. That way, we don't have to worry about letting people back in, and um I will see everyone back here at ten twenty. Thank you. All right, welcome back, everyone. Thank you for allowing us that time to take a short break. We are going to continue with department presentations, and I see Kurt, you are online, ready to go. So let's hear from ECDC.
Thank you very much, Council President. Members of council, thanks for allowing me here this opportunity. I love reprising what we've done over the last few months. And granted, there are a few curveballs with this update that you're getting from my colleagues. And stay tuned, there's more out of my shop here with, you know, with 2020 not turning out the way we thought it was going to. Starting with the accomplishments, there was just simply no competition for us. Rally the Valley had to be the very first thing that we talked about. I guess in the phrase that I included in the council package, innovative modernization of our industrial land use codes. That's a really concise way of trying to describe what was just a massive package that was, you know, worked with council all the way through, and just kudos for the support the council provided staff in the mayor's office on pushing this incredible piece of legislation through. So the plan points to a strategic reimagining of the valley, right? So it's, it's not just a place where anonymous business happens, you know, kind of behind four nondescript walls. But, but how can the city kind of enhance its value in ways that honor the area as a place of work? And I'll say inspiration or aspiration, including investment in parks and trail connections and other things that are valuable for our community going forward that we, that are going to increase in value as time goes on? I guess most importantly for me, the way I'll describe it is Rally the Valley was a design shift from the expediency of trucks and, and transport to a more focus on connecting its workers or the workforce in the valley to other enriching aspects of our community. So council may not know this, but since adoption and since this was passed, my office has gotten calls from California, cities in California, San Diego, Denver, so in Colorado and Nevada and Oregon, all asking for tips on how they could move kind of in this direction. It is a huge body of work. I think I first started talking to council about this maybe three years ago. I remember we were at, at a retreat in Maple Valley where we started talking about the concept of having to, I think I use the phrase, turn the barge. And Rally the Valley is not a light switch. We are not going to see massive changes overnight. It's going to take time. These incremental changes take time. That policy document, as you guys know, you know, my colleague with Pat mentioning it, there was so much work that went into that. It's full of initiatives. It's full of other ideas, you know, how we can kind of link arms with my colleagues and other departments to further the city's agenda for kind of our destiny in the valley, instead of just accepting what was being done to us. So that was our number one. That was my number one clear as day to get on this reprisal list. The next item were things that we did not anticipate happening again. I think you're going to keep hearing this out of my colleagues, but the COVID-19 response to selfishly for ECD, it was, it was really different. We are a forward-facing department, right? We're the only, you know, there's parks, police and public works. We're the non-P public-facing department, right? We're economic community development. We have to be open to the public, you know, that's what we do. And so back in March, I think it was in less than two weeks, we moved our entire permitting operations to an online platform. So just an incredible amount of work out of our IT group and our partners in finance to get this thing kind of duct taped together to where we could still be open for our customers. So in less than two weeks, we moved all of that operation online. You know, we used to have set office hours like any normal business where the permit center would be open. The big change for us here, and we're still having to reconcile this, is we're open 24 hours a day, seven days a week now. So we get applications from applicants sitting on their couch at 11:30 at night on a Saturday. So we are having to kind of adapt and get to know this new process. It is a challenge. Kiva does not make the system efficient, the way that we are having to deal with the permitting. That said, is we are accommodating our customers, the opportunity cost is we would be closed. So very proud of my colleagues and the other departments kind of rallying around this as a big effort. And, you know, we're making it work. It's, it's taken a lot of time and it's pretty labor-some. Decent segue here to the next accomplishment, and that is Amanda. So on the flip side, that's our 21st century permitting that we hope to be establishing here in our community soon. So as we move towards implementation of the Amanda system, I have had to dedicate about eight staff members for the last year and a half, wherein they've put over 1,100 hours in so far, and obviously we're not done yet. Just in, I'm kind of likening it out to a lean process for, for our entire permitting system. We're having to map out every step of our permit process for, you know, dozens of permit types. We're identifying efficiency measures. So we don't, we don't want to just replicate the inefficiencies of Kiva into our new system. We're compiling all the fees and formulas. Most importantly, we're translating all of our documents into a a software-ready template, I guess is how we'd say it. Amanda will be 100% paperless. So payments, issuance of permits, obviously the intake. It is going to be just remarkable how many efficiencies are going to be gained internally for sure, and it'll, it'll impact finance as well to the positive, but our customers are really going to see the improvements. Mike's on the call here. I am going to say that we'll be live, lights on with our new Amanda system by April of next year. So fingers crossed, knock on wood, that's our target. But just an incredible amount of work over the last year and a half, kind of teeing up for this new transition. Similar to the COVID response, you know, we, we kicked into another program here. When the balloon was first floated on CARES dollars, we jumped into gear right away, obviously with the mayor's office and our finance team and the law department. Six months, I'll say, from initial knowledge of there being a CARES funding opportunity for our community, we set up, you know, we operated, we dispersed, we're monitoring, and now we're reporting results on, on that package. So economic community development, what we did through our economic development team is we collaborated, collaborated with, you know, multiple cities discussing optimal award levels, proper administration, I'm going to say, under ambiguous federal and state guidelines. We helped other cities find what appropriate kind of funding levels and contract structure to set their, their programs up. Once again, Kent was at, at the lead of this effort. So very proud of our, our very small but scrappy economic development team that made that happen. As you know, we set eligibility criteria, scoring guidelines for ranking of eligible applications. Again, the overall goal for our community was to help the most needy businesses get, get served. So we created a team of, I'm going to call them community helpers, where we went out in the 10 most prevalent languages, language communities in Kent to assist in outreach beyond our, our usual suspects. Usual suspects, meaning our outreach. Most typically is we go through the chamber, we go through Kent Downtown Partnership. We know for this dire need, we needed to kind of penetrate and get into our community and serve the community that needed it most. So just an amazing amount of work went into outreach on that effort. So what happened? We distributed payments of $6,500 to over 300 businesses. So it's in So it's incredible. The other side of it, and unfortunately, the side that we didn't talk as much about, and I want to talk more about was we also worked with our partners at Green River College, Aerospace Joint Apprenticeship Committee, AJAC. We set up a series of COVID-19 workplace training seminars, basically how to bring their workplaces into compliance from hygiene standards, things like that. The best part about this sort of adjunct project, though, is we also provided wage reimbursements to local manufacturers. So as you can imagine, in these times when everybody was getting squeezed, manufacturers were having to kind of consider, can I keep my staff on? You know, everybody was tightening their belts. As a result of this, we were actually able to, through the reimbursements, we supported the retention of 80 jobs in in our community. So if you think 80 jobs, but then you think of what 80 jobs means, it's a family. So there are 80 families out there that, you know, the individual would have been unemployed but for this program. Incredibly proud of the effort that went into that. It was a ton of work. Just thank thanks to council and the mayor's office for allowing us to to get out there and do that for our community. Look, wrapping up the accomplishments, there's no way we could talk about accomplishments without bringing up the sound transit projects. So Federalway Link Extension, you know, includes two stations. Everybody knows that to be built up on West Hill. So while light rail is, you know, it's already shaping the West Hill commercial corridor, the part that's exciting for me is it's going to create new neighborhoods. And then even where it's not doing that, it's going to re-inspire or kind of, I'll say, reinvest into existing neighborhoods. Each division in my department had just an amazing amount of input and impact on the project outcomes for this for this exciting kind of new adventure for the city of Kent. We're building a new city up on West Hill. I just think that can't be understated. It's overstated. It's just, it's an amazing project, and we're just at the very beginning. The amount of permitting that's gone through, we're about halfway through kind of the peak volumes that we expect. By, I'm going to say, March, by the time we get Amanda online, that we should see most of the packages, what we're calling IFC, issued for construction packages should be behind us at that point. A ton of work. I have dedicated staff in each of my divisions where almost 100% of their jobs are focused on the sound transit work. So, you know, on this sheet is our base operation services. Council is familiar with ECD. For those in the audience, ECD is largely a construction permitting, you know, inspection office. We do entitlement land use. That's the bread and butter, the daily operations for our department. The smaller divisions that we have that publicly you'll see the most of is going to be our economic development team. And then I call it our policy shop, but probably our strategic planning group. So those two are very active in our community, especially at the council level, engaged in kind of that forward looking piece. If you've been to our offices here on the floor, there are signs all over the lunch area and all the hallways. We have what's next under every door almost. That's our phrase around here. We're always kind of keying into how do we move this community forward? What's going to be the next big project? What's our next initiative? That's a really good transition for the new appropriations section. There were some council questions related to the Economic Development Opportunity Fund. If it's okay, Madam President, I'd like to just kind of move into that unless there are any questions on the reprisal stuff.
I think that's a great idea. And then if people have questions along the way, they can raise their hand.
You bet. All right. So on this one, I'm asking that we provide resources to match initiatives that are in line with the economic development plan. So we passed our economic development plan now six years ago. Actually, Bill Ellis, our Chief Economic Development Officer, presented a council this last week where he actually ticked off some of the big boxes that we, you know, the accomplishments that we have achieved in there. For example, having resources to match initiatives are so important for us because a recent project we have, you know, design of projects in anticipation of grant opportunities. That's probably our biggest category that we have going forward. A good example, as of late, of course, that you can relate to is going to be the Meet Me on Meeker segments. Each one of those segments required us to work with our partners kind of in the city, whether it was parks or public works, on coming up with a design so we could submit a grant proposal that would be, you know, greatly improve our chances of getting the grant, the further we would have the design. Well, design costs money. We don't have any funds set aside to further initiatives like this in the city of Kent. So the way that we had done it in the past were, you know, it's a bit of catch as catch can. We, you know, there's a couch cushion exercise that would happen where we would try and find any amount of funding that we could to improve our chances of securing the grants. That's great. It's just not sustainable. So another example are resources for, I'll call it, ready leverage on workforce development initiatives. I mentioned AJAC a bit ago, so such as partnering with AJAC on some of our initiatives we want to move forward in the coming years. Here's how I'll say it. Most importantly, the fund would provide resources beholden to no interests outside of the city's own for spearheading projects or forging partnerships with a very strong City of Kent leadership position. I'll kind of get to what I'm alluding to there here next. Historically, we've only had access to lodging tax advisory committee dollars for marketing. We desperately need resources beyond the the heads and beds to encompass, you know, business to business conferences, sponsorship dollars to stage these types of events, build relationships and services for local business space without concern for the hospitality return. So for those of you who don't know, when we would avail ourselves or we would be successful in getting lodging tax grants, lodging tax dollars are for marketing purposes tied to the tourism industry. So we would always have to have kind of a dotted line or even better, a straight line down to the return, basically to our hoteliers and the tourism interests. The city of Kent needs, you know, targeted marketing dollars for economic development purposes far beyond those that just involve tourism in our community. Rally the Valley is chock full of initiatives and opportunities that are going to require resources for us to kind of, you know, land the plane on on some of those bigger bigger initiatives. Another good example for resources would be, we're very engaged. ECD is very engaged in a variety of regional, local efforts to rebuild, you know, the economy and reform our workforce development, honestly, the system in King County. So we at ECD, we are facilitating dialogue between government, education and industry constantly. So as actionable ideas are generated in our partners, we may have cause to hire consultants for, you know, specific research or, you know, seek outside counsel for business operation planning, structuring financial deals where it's germane to, you know, the city's economic development interests. This funding could resource these efforts and I guess most importantly, ensure the city of Kent's perspective and the agenda frame our programs and our projects. I recall the council retreats that we've done in the past where I've I've implored, you know, the importance of having partners in our in our council members to go out and represent Kent as they're in the community. And more importantly, in the region, we need to tell our story. If you guys remember that one, we need to have some control of our own destiny. You know, lots of the grant dollars that are out there are from the state or sometimes from the county, or I'll just say the region. Each time it's from a broader sense like that, it has other restrictions or, you know, there are, we're less flexible with what the city of Kent can do with that that money. We are unique. We have our own issues and we want to kind of secure our destiny. You guys have heard me say that over and over again. This funding would enable the city to participate at a level beyond, you know, my shop is great. I, we're the idea generators, right? We we generate ideas and referrals for others. But directly engaging in implementation of our objectives, you know, of special concern to the city is where we've kind of fallen down. We don't have a resource pool to to do our thing like that. There's one more thing before I open it up to council, and this is kind of near and dear to me. I think it's imperative that the city has cultivated a variety of regional allies and partners through, I guess, recently, think about our Lunar Rover promotional stuff that we've done with the community. Just broad outreach and marketing went into that, linked up the, you know, the Museum of Flight. And we hosted it at Showware. It was well attended. So these organizations continue to seek out the children of the Kent School District. So as Kent, you know, is home to both futuristic and innovative business and also disadvantaged households, I just, I personally see an important and very constructive role in facilitating activities within the city that are meant to kind of familiarize the kids in our community with the concept of science, technology, engineering and math as an attainable and an optimal path to careers in our community, in Kent, in our businesses in the valley. So the funding could help invest in these opportunities strategically where there is clear nexus to our economic development objectives. One last thing before I open it up is, you know, it's it's not in the title, economic development opportunity. I mean, it's it's so broad that it might have some concern there. What this really will do is my colleagues, that you've already heard this morning, you've heard Pat talk about how they're so engaged with ECD, parks is inseparable on their projects that they're moving forward. Economic development is safety, parks, you know, public works, it's all of us together. If there are ideas or initiatives in other departments that will further one of our goals out of our economic development plans, this type of funding could be used to actually achieve those objectives. So it's not just an ECD funding source. This is a a great opportunity. And frankly, it's it's long overdue. And with Rally the Valley, it's a huge opportunity for us to start checking more boxes out of that plan. So with that, Council President, turn it back over to you for any questions.
Thank you so much, Kurt. I am going to turn to council member voice. He has his hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Great for the presentation. Also, I think, you know, a lot of great things happened in your department. I do want to go back to Rally the Valley, and I do know Councilmember Core and Councilmember Larmor, when we was on ECD Committee, and when they first brought that to us, you know, and we were all a little skeptical, but we all also understood that we have to change how we need to diversify the valley. And through your leadership and also want to thank Councilmember Larmor and Councilmember Core, who was on the ECD Committee, really just kind of getting our arms around this here and your team are bringing up the speed. And no doubt, this was a good decision. So I'm not surprised other people is reaching out to you and your organization, trying to figure out how we did it. So kudos for you on that. Then the other thing, you know, COVID is tough, right? But in my opinion, it really kind of transformed your organization in a way as far as permit, right? The one that we always talked about is being able to do it online, right? So I think there was some good, if there's probably not the right word to say, that came out that that benefit your department. Because I think what Bellevue has, like I talked to you before, about being able not to come down there and be able to do the permit right from their home. And I think that's good. Of course, that allows more work for you and your team, but definitely is the right way to go. And then last but not least, I will echo your comment is that, you know, we're not Seattle, have no intention of being Seattle, and don't want to be Seattle. We are Kent and very proud to be Kent. So so once again, thanks for your presentation and also wanted to give another shout out to Councilmember Core and Larmor for really helping pushing that Rally the Valley for what while we was on the committee. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Voice. Councilmember Larmor.
Yeah, thank you for those comments, Bill, and we appreciate your leadership on that too during the committee. And yeah, I just want to echo that. And you both said it's very true. I think when you guys first came with Rally the Valley, we're like, what? Exactly. But then as it, you know, as it progressed and the plan came together and the input from the businesses down there, it just turned into this beautiful document that reflected a really participatory process with our with our business community. And so I'm really pleased with the outcome. And and then for your team, you know, I think, you know, Bill alluded this to this for your team to shift from that type of focus to then helping these, you know, the struggling small and micro businesses, I think just shows the flexibility and that your team has. So just kudos to you guys. Really appreciate everything you're doing for the the large enterprise down to the small micro businesses in our community, and it's important and valuable. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank, thank you for your your whole department. The revenue that you've kept coming in, keeping up permitting inspections. You know, I was able to get answers for our residents, for our businesses when they call in. So special thanks to Matt and to Bill. But you guys were just great, you know, whether it was the question about sand transit and the Federalway Leaking Extension or, you know, a permit and why the cost was one. One customer had made a mistake on their application, which caused fees to be greatly inflated. That was solved quickly once he let me know and was able to contact Matt on that. And, you know, the Meet Me on Meeker project grant programs that you guys are doing, just you guys have done a very good job for the city. So thank you very much. You know, that extends to some of the other ones. But I just wanted to put a special thanks out to Matt and Bill and the department. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Fincher. Councilmember Larmor, do you have another question?
I did. I just, there's one more comment I wanted to make, especially for the viewing audience, because there's something you didn't mention, Kurt, is that, you know, I want to appreciate, give some thanks and appreciation to Haley too in your department. Because what I don't think people realize is, you know, your staff also supports us as we're out in the regional conversations and committees too. And I love that I can text her at any time when I'm in one of these regional meetings on housing. I'm like, Haley, what do they talk, what's this acronym mean, you know? And she's always responsive. So you guys provide a lot of staff support for us too as we're out advocating for Kent regionally too. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I, any other questions or comments for Kurt? Kurt, as you can see, echoing all the things that my colleagues have said, your team is doing a great job in providing important opportunities for our residents and our businesses here in Kent. And I guess we've done a great job, great ideas, great innovative, and you're moving us in the right direction. So.
Very much appreciate all the comments. It will go directly back to my team and and they are fantastic. So thanks for the comments.
Thank you. All right. Moving on in our presentations, I'd like to welcome Terry Smith to talk about HR.
Great. Well, good morning, everybody. Councilmember and Council President Troughtner, Mayor Ralph. It's a pleasure to present to you our budget and talk through some of the accomplishments of our HR team. And I just want to give a shout out to actually being able to see my fellow directors' whole face without a face mask on it. So I appreciate that. Let me jump into my discussion here. So as our HR team considered our accomplishments during this current biennium, it was really difficult to look backwards when 2020 has really dominated the the landscape with its once in a lifetime firsts and unfamiliar experiences. However, our department information that you have there includes pre-COVID and current accomplishments. We've had two successful contract negotiations with AFSMI and Teamsters. We've rolled out a new risk management system, which has provided tremendous reporting capabilities to our departments. We've got forward momentum in realizing government efficiencies. And we've continued to provide outstanding benefits and we hire remarkable talent. And as we can appreciate, the current year started off with much anticipation for what 2020 had in store. We hit the ground running with the kickoff to our human capital management project, which is Workday. We had in-person collaboration with our HR payroll and IT teams along with the implementation vendor Collaborative Solutions. And there was just a lot of synergy in the conference room and around the table, and we got a lot accomplished. And just as we were finishing the discovery phase, everything shut down around us. everything shut down around us and our employees transitioned to remote work and other types of schedules. And while remote work is not unusual, certainly the private sector probably utilizes it a lot more. It was very new and unique to government services. So for our staff to come into the office every day to then work from their, their homes, created some interesting challenges. And, you know, I guess like some of my colleagues have said, it's also presented great opportunities for us. We've been able to learn and much more fully utilize our technology platforms such as Teams. In kind of a bit of a bittersweet way, the employees now wake up at home, they turn on their computer and they tend to work, you know, from morning to well into the night and on weekends. And so the work-life balance is a bit askew right now. And in some regards, having COVID, keeping people from, you know, really enjoying a lot of external activities has allowed the focus for us to continue our, our work on this project. So I, I, I'm not exactly happy that that is, is going on, but it has certainly benefited our, benefited our project for sure. We continue to do our day jobs in addition to a full-time load with bringing up Workday. And that means we have to understand and implement new laws. The newest one for the state is the Washington Paid Family Medical Leave. That went into effect January 1st. And it had some fits and starts certainly at the beginning of the year and seems to have leveled off to a bit, but is definitely getting a lot of usage. And then we had the new unfunded federally mandated paid leave, which is the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, otherwise known as FFCRA. And that required our staff and payroll and IT to try and create this new system and our very outdated and might I say, broken system of JDE to facilitate this new law. It includes, you know, creating new forms, educating employees and just continuing to work through this new law at every turn. We've needed to conduct all of our meetings virtually. We have had to rethink how we're going to do open enrollment this year. That does start the end of this month and goes through about mid-November. And that's actually going to be a manual process, primarily because we just are out of bandwidth in the JDE system. But we're also right at the transition point to go live in the Workday model. So we're going to end up doing open enrollment, a little bit old school. But I, I, we are well transitioned, well versed in how to do that. We are navigating challenges being presented to us with COVID-19, again, as my colleagues have said. And that's, you know, learning about it and helping our employees to figure out what it means. It actually has meant we've worked very closely with departments that have had affected employees and very personal contact with the employees who have called in sick, those that have been exposed or potentially exposed to positive individuals outside of work and the impact that it has on our workforce. And then, of course, the unfortunate situation where we've had employees who have contracted it and have been positive for COVID. And while I, I would like to say that that number is fairly small. It's still quite large in the grand scheme of things, because these are our employee family members. But every time we do have a situation where an employee has presented either as being ill, positive, or potentially exposed to a positive person, that means my office will reach out personally to every contact through contact tracing of our employees that, that one person may have, have been in contact with. And that's primarily done with two of us in, in the office. So we do make personal contact with those employees, help them through questions they have, testing sites, timing, pay issues, questions they have with regard to the FFCRA, their only balances, all of those things. You can appreciate a lot of angst and uncertainty with employees as they, they begin that journey. So we've had about 30 employees who've had known exposures to positive persons or close contacts. And we've had five employees who have tested positive. And the first one was in mid-April. I'm happy to say those employees have, have recovered and are back to work. So on top of all of this, I, I mentioned, we continue to move our human capital management or Workday project forward. We've gone through testing and builds and parallels and data conversions. We're also producing our own training materials and conducting user experience sessions internally. And I'm happy to say that the light at the end of the tunnel is, is becoming brighter. And we're about 10 weeks away from go-live. And you'll get a more robust update on this project, I believe, at the October 27th Committee of the Whole Meeting. So through all of this, we have lost some staff. You know, unfortunately with COVID earlier this year, we did a, a budget exercise and we did have one layoff. Also through another situation, we've transferred another employee to a department. And we've had a couple of voluntary separations. But through all that, I can say we've got a very talented, dedicated and flexible HR team. And we've been able to work with IT. And we're going to transition their human capital management business process analyst into one of our vacant positions, probably towards the end of this year. And she's going to be able to fulfill that business intelligence and knowledge manager role and become the human capital management administrator. We've also had the ability to move a temporary employee into the other vacancy, budgeted vacancy. And given the workload with the go-live, our new system coming online, training, learning, post-production projects, we'll also be conducting our first open enrollment next fall in Workday. We, we realize we do have a need for some continued HR resources. And we'd like to be able to do that in the form of a two-year term, temporary limited term position, which you'll see in your documents there. Historically, our office has had exempt analyst classifications and above, notwithstanding our administrative support position, which I mentioned earlier, we lost to a layoff. But we are looking at the, the positions, the duties that we need. And we feel that we can utilize a lower classification, non-exempt position to help primarily with our leave management. As I mentioned, COVID is, is taking a great deal of time, but also backfilling some of the administrative tasks, primarily in our benefits division. Probably know, we still are a very paper-oriented society and our benefits team is, is very, very well buried under paper. And that includes filing as well as, as just a benefits paperwork, et cetera. So what we're proposing is a term limited temporary position. We'd be utilizing all of our budgeted temporary budget. We will have assistance from IT for the first quarter of 2021 because of the backfill support for Workday. But then going forward, we would be requesting an additional almost $49,000 in 2021 and then 60, almost $68,000 in 2022. And with that, I would open the, the floor if any of you have any questions.
Thank you so much, Terry. Councilmember Voice, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam President. Terry, what are your team is doing around the work from home policy? I mean, there's a lot of organization, as we, once COVID, COVID died down, well, organization like Microsoft and the one I work with is putting policy together around working from home going forward. Have your team tackled this year, what putting policy to get around that?
Yes, we have put a policy together at the very beginning. It was not a policy, it wasn't anything that we outwardly offered to city. Like I said, it was, it's very unusual in government services. So we did create a policy at the beginning that included expectations of employees and managers. There is a checklist that employees need to review and attest that they have a safe working environment in their remote location, that they've got the equipment necessary. And that includes a computer or internet services. And, and then they, they sign the agreement acknowledging all of those things.
So the policy you put together early on in a year, things that changed since then, are they sustainable now? We need to make some tweaks to that. I mean, lots of things from day one.
There definitely needs to be some tweaks to that. And Mayor Ralph and Mr. Matheson and I have talked about toolkit, if you will, of helping managers, supervisors and employees on this go-forward process. It certainly has lasted much longer than any of us envisioned at the beginning. And it's going to provide some resources for managers to help set realistic guidelines and expectations for employees. Help employees know what those expectations are. And as I mentioned, you know, the, some of those expectations are that you actually turn your computer off at a reasonable point in the day, shut it down and, you know, enjoy your non-work life. And then conversely, you've got challenges with employees that, you know, are, are doing the hit and miss remote work. And I think those are the folks that might need some parameters on what those expectations are. So we're, we're continuing to work on updating what this remote work looks like.
Well, I think that's critical as we move forward, right? Just to, I think we need to have the infrastructure in place to make sure the employee understand their role and responsibility. I know my organization has been very positive and of course, having people work from home, been very, very productive for us having people to go out and, and do the work. So I think it's important, as we go forward, as you put that policy together, maybe there's something you can, Council President, we can share with the council. But it is critical and there's a lot of pros to having people working from home and especially during this time and even going after COVID, right? So, but thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Voice. I really appreciate your HR background and the thoughtful questions that you always ask to help us better understand what's happening in that department too. So thank you for that. Councilmember Core.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Just a quick question. Did we use CARES funding to provide? I remembered in the earlier, we did provide some, like some employees near desktops and stuff. But are we doing anything about internet access for employees at home? Just out of curiosity.
Um, we have not had that question asked. Interestingly, it was a question that came up through my HR peers just this week. What we are doing, what each of us are doing in that situation. And to my knowledge, and perhaps Mike Carrington can speak to this, but I haven't had any requests from our employees regarding limited or difficult access to internet in order to do their, their remote work. We do have, you know, hotspot phones, different little devices, I, I guess if it comes up, that we can address those things. It is one of the items in the checklist that employees look at with regard to remote work is what is the capacity and capability of their internet, because it is critical to effective remote work. So, and I, I would defer to Mr. Carrington on the, that question though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Core. We'll make a note of that. And when we hear from IT, maybe that's something that can be answered there as well. Um, Councilmember Larmor.
So Terry, I just want to understand, so the requested position, I think with the, trying to read through the people being shifted around, so there's really just one net new position we're requesting?
That is correct.
And this is the, due mostly because of the implementation of the new system? Additional support is needed for that system?
It is until we fully understand, you know, I'll be honest with you. I believe that once we get in and start utilizing the system, understanding it more, I think we're going to see some efficiencies, certainly within the HR department. But for the, the next year plus.
Great. Any other questions for Terry?
Madam Chair, yeah, I just want to pick it back off what Mary Larmor just added. And, you know, we have Workday in our organization, right? And it's really, I like it and it's a great tool. And I think the support person, it is critical, it's new, it's going to be new to a lot of people. It's going to be new how they do, do things and move things along within the system. So I think having a Workday admin, or what you want to call it, is, is going to be critical to the success of the tool. So I think that makes sense.
Thank you, Councilmember Voice.
Yeah, and I'll just echo that too, you know, my, in my day job, when we go in, we'll oftentimes have a, you know, an additional year's sort of service support contract and we charge a lot more than you're asking for. You know, to get organizations through that transition period that next year. So, yeah.
All right. Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Terry, for that presentation and being with us this morning.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on. I'd like to welcome Chief Padilla to talk about the police.
Hi, can everybody hear me okay?
You sound great. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, uh, well, good morning, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity. And I'll get right to it. I know we're tight on time and I've got a lot to cover. So just want to say thank you for the opportunity and we'll go through the document. I know there were several questions related to the police budget. And so what my plan is, is to go through the, the budget document. And then I, I have some responses for the questions we've received already. And then I'll take them as they come during the presentation as well. All right. So with that, we'll get to the department accomplishments. Have them listed there for you on the document, starting with the implementation of the body worn camera program for the patrol officers. So for our uniform officers, this was a monumental first step. And I, it, it was a lot of work, but by the police department. But I also want to recognize my colleagues and their teams in other departments, including law, city clerks, finance, IT and the courts. They led and their teams contributed to a large amount of work that went into pulling this off. And so now we are completing our first year of implementation in patrol and it's outstanding. This also represents part one of the mayor's commitment to the community in regards to enhancing transparency and accountability to the public, while at the same time increasing safety and effectiveness to our officers. And we are starting now to gather both qualitative and, and quantitative data that shows that the cameras are performing the way we think they will. We're seeing decreases in complaints and resolutions faster to complaints. We're seeing training enhancements from being able to review video and, and doing lessons learned. In fact, yesterday at our police leadership retreat, we had a, an entire two hours dedicated to lessons learned. to lessons learned using the body worn camera to reinforce good behavior and address performance that isn't up to par. So great, that's a great accomplishment that's going on. Our second is, you know, we have been fully engrossed in the issues of race and equity for obvious reasons, more so than any year before. And we've done a tremendous amount of work, and we have a tremendous amount of work to continue. Some of the things I'd highlight real quick for sake of time, of all of our policy rewrites, our new policies regarding de-escalation duty intervening, all of our use of force rewrites. We spent probably the better part of a week now going through all those policies. They are in final draft form, working through the process. We hope to have those finalized and published to the public here very soon. Speaking of policies, we're able to establish a public portal where residents can log into our website, go to our website, click it, click a link, and have full access to all of our policies for transparency. We've established a race and social justice commander as Commander Bobby Hollis, who will be leading the future efforts in this area and the space. And we've been busy, you know, despite the fact that there's pandemic going on. In the last three months, I've probably had more community meetings and discussions and panel groups than I've had in my previous two years as chief. So it's been incredible. Over nine community meetings, a couple panels, and much more of those to come. They've been incredible conversations. I love that the community is coming together to look for collaborative ways to enhance everybody and address the issues. And we all want the same thing, right? We want to get better. As Pat noted earlier, our department, our region, was one of the first in the country to finalize the new Valley Investigation Independent Investigation Protocols, excuse me, for officer-involved shootings. We led the way on that. We are and continue to be a model for the rest of the state, in fact, for the rest of the county. And then we took another huge step in appointing our two non-law enforcement representatives to the team who will serve as Kent's eyes and ears for transparency and accountability during those investigations. Very proud of that. We established a bigger presence in social media, our website, the Kent PD Way, addressing a lot of the issues that are being asked and some of the reform that's being required. And it's all been great stuff. And we've already begun in our, in our second phase of training in the areas of de-escalation, crisis intervention, arrest and control training, post custody care protocols. And then there's work with the state legislators regarding the co-responder crisis funding and police internship program, what I call the community immersion program that we'll deliver on here very soon. And then also working with them regarding, and in line with the city legislative priorities for funding data collection and a universal use of force reporting system. So that's, that's been work that's been going on. I meet for work groups and workshops on those issues weekly and sometimes more than one time in a week. So that's, that's a lot of work, and it's good work. You know, moving forward, I'm very excited that we are moving on the mayor's executive order. We're going to be doing and have been doing the review of policies, and we talked about training. One of the biggest parts of that is that we are restructuring the Diversity Task Force, which will be renamed the Police Race and Equity Advisory Board and the establishment of a formal charter with appointments to the board. So that's exciting. I put the current cadre of Diversity Task Force members on notice. We are going to be calling a meeting very soon to begin and get their input on that. And we will report back at some point when that's a little closer to being finalized. And so that's that. And there's a lot more going on, but for sake of time, I'll stop there. And our last under accomplishments, we noted our hiring and retention of our employees. Like the other directors, my peers have said, COVID has had a phenomenal impact on our ability to maintain operations. And you couple that with the impacts to the budget and the reductions, like all the departments, the police department saw reductions in police corrections and support staff positions already. And so it's important, I think, to, to recognize that despite that, we've been able to keep our workforce solid. We continue to hire for the unfilled positions that are currently out there, including receiving officers from other departments. What's becoming an emerging trend, if you will, it's still very difficult to recruit candidates, but we're seeing lateral officers from other departments now. And a lot of them aren't leaving necessarily for budget cuts. A lot of them are leaving because they perceive they're not supported. And they recognize, because it's true, that in the city of Kent, there is still strong support from our elected, from the mayor, from the community to fund and adequately support public safety through funding police positions. So they're coming here, and they are telling us when we interview them for hiring that that's the reason they want to work here. So that's, that's been a great thing. You know, we work hard and above, above everything else, when we establish an operating model, a service delivery model, if you will, that takes into account that we are not adequately staffed for the amount, the size of our city, you have to pour in resources to training and equipment. And, and that's what we've done. So we've built our service delivery model. The reason why our officers are able to take in many cases, double the amount of 911 calls in other jurisdictions nearby us is because we hire better, we train better, and we equip better. And that's what keeps it together. So with that, and then the other thing I would attribute it to is we have worked hard to establish a culture where our employees get the importance and the gravity of their work, and they come to work knowing that it's important. We support them on the backside of that, give them what they need, the tools and equipment. And together, that combines for outstanding service to the community. It combines for pride in what they do. And ultimately, it results in retaining really good career-minded law enforcement and public safety employees. So very proud of those accomplishments this year.
Thank you, Chief. If you don't mind, if I can interrupt you, Councilmember Boys has had us hand up for a while.
Well, I was waiting. I could wait till he's done.
All right.
Either way, I'm good either way.
We'll circle back around.
All right. I'll wait until he's done. I don't want to interrupt him just now.
No, no problem. All right. So going through, you have the document there. I'm not going to read through all of it there, but touching on our funding sources real quick. Yes, we have predominantly are funded through our general fund. I think Paula, Director Painter established earlier that the increases for the general fund were primarily through increase in costs. Same with the criminal justice fund. There was a question regarding whether or not there are FTE funded in the criminal justice fund. The answer is yes. There are several in the police department, both police and support staff. But I also believe, and Paula could confirm, there are other FTE and other departments funded out of that as well, not through our budget, but through the collective budget for the city. So just to kind of clarify that. Then our ask, what did we ask for? Well, we didn't ask for very much because we are respectful and mindful of the situation with the budget that the city is in. And we recognize that there isn't room for a lot of adding on. So we went to what we, a compilation of things that have been agreed upon by the council prior. And the first one was the car per officer program. Just by way of recalling history, we've set about a four-year plan for that. We, this budget would represent year three and four of finalizing that plan. We are on schedule. Actually, we're a little ahead of schedule because we did purchase some cars early. We had the opportunity to save money, if you remember that. And so this is a continuation of a vital program. I know there's questions on this. I'll answer those. But we are specifically seeking to continue using school zone camera funds to cover this expense. The other ask that we had for this budget was to continue phase two, but I'm calling phase two of the body worn camera program. So if you, as I said earlier, we were able to outfit our uniform personnel. This is the process to make sure that other members of the department, such as our detectives and our plainclothes operators, members of our tactical teams, have these cameras outfitted to them so that we have full coverage. We need another forty to do that. So we're seeking to fund twenty in twenty twenty-one and another twenty cameras in twenty twenty-two. So that's the ask for that. One of the reasons to support this, if you're wondering, why do detectives need this type of camera? I don't want to bring up, this is a tragedy, and I want to be real sensitive here. But if you look at what's coming out in terms of what happened with Rihanna Taylor, the officers that were serving that warrants were detectives. So they were not uniformed personnel, which meant they weren't assigned body worn cameras. And I think the community, that police department and everyone involved would agree that it would have been beneficial of that video available for their dealing with that incident, that tragedy. So we recognize that before. We've had our detectives involved in, in critical incidents. And so we want to outfit them for their safety and well-being, but also for that extra accountability and transparency to the public. So there, I'll pause there. I have your questions so far. But before I go forward, did we want to take any questions at this point, Madam President?
Yes. Thanks, Chief. Councilmember Boys.
Thank you, Madam President. Chief, I got a couple of questions here. One is just the review of the videos that we've been having. I'm just curious, roughly how many have we have, what they've been like, just the success around those? That's my first question. I give it to you first.
So my intent is to gather that data and actually bring it to one of the public safety reports at one of the upcoming councils because I don't have it. So, but ballpark, I can tell you, it's been, well, there's thousands of videos to start with. Public disclosure requests are pretty incredible and requiring full-time work on that. But in terms of complaints, I don't, I the trend right now is that we're receiving less. But what's even more important that we are able to get to the answer right away, and we're responsive a hundred percent of the time. We still continue to see a discrepancy a little bit with what was perceived and what happened. And what's great about that, in the circumstances where we can show the video, if the person's willing to view it, we get, we get some really good closure and understanding out of that. And that's probably one of the biggest values. We have people that walk away informed and going, okay, maybe they still don't like what happened, but they get it, and they know it's not a malicious effort on the officer's part. So I can't quantify numbers for you right now, but that's, there's, there are several of those. And and then in terms of lessons learned, we are going through every month and screening for training and for corrective action of videos, and we're addressing them real time. Then we're going to our leaders, our supervisors, sergeants, and going through the videos and reinforcing what the policy requirements are, what our accreditation standards are. And so it's really elevated our ability to make sure our officers are doing the right things in the right way.
Okay. And my other question real quick is, as far as the camera goes, I know we've always been on the leading edge, the city of Kent. Are there any other city in the state that you're aware of that is using the body camera as well that we are?
There are, but they're very few. So when we started our program, we were either number four or number five in the state. It's hard to quantify because there isn't a database for who has them all. I know in King County, we were the third agency to get them behind Seattle and Tua. But we were the first agency, mid-sized agency to do it, and I'm very proud of that. I think the trend now, obviously, and I hope the state legislator will support this, because we have said this often, I believe every department needs them. I believe every officer needs them. And so you're going to see that grow. I know Tacoma, Federal Way, Renton, and a couple other regional jurisdictions right away are moving on implementation as well.
Okay, my last question here, Council President, is, you know, every campaign I have ran, I've been about public safety, and I'm a big proponent of public safety. And there have been calls for defunding the police, and I have gone on record and will continue to go on record that that's something that I do not support. And I'm just, however, I believe in accountability. I believe in other programs around the Miller Healthness and domestic violence, where we can have from a community perspective. I believe in those, but I do not believe in defunding the police. From your perspective, I'm just curious, if the defunding of Kent Police Department of fifty percent, what would that look like?
Oh, boy. Okay. Yeah. So thank you for the question. So we got a glimpse of what this could look like when we did the budget reduction exercise for COVID. The mayor and CEO Matheson had directed that we do a five, ten, fifteen, and twenty cut. At the twenty percent cut, we were looking at a loss of about fifty sworn police officer positions. So if you look at that, we wouldn't just take straight out of personnel if we could find a way. But I can assure you that a cut of fifty percent is about seventy to seventy-five police officers and several somewhere in the ballpark of probably twenty. If you're doing across the court, across the board cut of fifty percent, twenty-five, thirty civilian staff. And the impact of that is pretty devastating just in that alone. But if you consider that we should be at about a hundred and ninety-five sworn officers today, and we are authorized a hundred and thirty, continue to have double the emergency calls than most jurisdictions have. You can see where that starts to impact call response. It starts to impact the ability to intervene and prevent crime. That pretty much goes away. I would be looking at having to retract any of our regional efforts in alignment with some of our regional partners for federal investigations, human trafficking, drugs, cartel level investigations. We would have to retract services back to the city because that's the priority. We would also look at losing pretty much any community engagement programs that I think are more valuable now than we've ever had before. It's, it's very counterintuitive to what needs to be done. And then the part about it, there's a couple of things that really concern me. Number one is we are a minority majority city. And what we are asking for is to cut valuable services to people of color. And I can't say that enough. The reality is we are in neighborhoods of color for violent crime calls, and the victims are people of color calling for our help, more so than we are in some of our more white communities. And so neighborhoods, I should say. And so that, that reality is real. The services are going to be felt most in those neighborhoods. And I'm not just trying to be someone that's sounding an alarm. That's the reality. The other part is this, it is a dangerous job to do to be a police officer. And you need the resources and support to do that job safely. And cutting staffing, the availability of backup officers and support to respond to emergency calls directly increases the danger to my officers. And so I don't see that cutting particularly by fifty percent is a good idea in any way, shape, or form.
And I just, I thank you for your perspective on that. I have my own perspective, but I really appreciate you sharing it with all of us. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boys. Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Well, since Bill had three questions, I'm going to, hey, I'm going to take three, too. The first one, Bill, is an easy one. When exactly is the body worn cameras turned on? Is it when they're approaching a car, for example, to give a ticket, serving a warrant at a house? When, when does the officer turn it on? Is it when he gets on duty and turns it on full time, all the time? Or how does that work?
You directed that question to me because you did say Bill. So I want to make sure you wasn't directing it towards me.
You probably need a body worn camera. Which reminds me, which reminds me, have you started your swimming lessons yet?
Is that for me?
All right, back to Ralph. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thanks. So back to the question. So when do they turn them on? There are policy mandates that they turn them on when they're assigned to calls. I'm just going to synopsize it. When they're assigned to calls for service, or if they have, if they're doing something that is of the public interest, right? So a lot of times officers will be on patrol, and they'll get flagged down for, and they don't know what it's for. And so they'll turn on the camera even though they're not assigned to a call. Or, and we do use the cameras to document evidence and statements and crime scenes and that thing. So it's not full time. They turn them off when they're in places of privacy, like if we go in your home to ask you questions and you don't want them on. If you're not being investigated for, say, domestic violence, we respect that, and we respect your privacy. We turn them off, that kind of thing.
That's great. That's what I was hoping that was the answer. The other question began when, earlier when Julia was giving her presentation about the school zone cameras, the amount of revenue that was coming in, that there seems to be some type of hesitation. revenue that was coming in, that there seems to be some type of hesitation in implementing more school zone cameras, because there's a need out there. And also the revenues, you know, okay. So can you answer that question for me?
So yes. So as far as whether or not to implement them, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the easy way and say, that's, that's for, for you guys to decide, right? Respectfully to the council. But, but, but in making that decision, here's what I think is important to be aware of. So number one, we would have to do feasibility studies to make sure that there are a number of violations. So there's a need. So we have safety issues, and there's enough violations to fund the cameras. So the cameras, their biggest, you know, I'm guessing somewhere near 50% goes to funding the cameras and the employees that run them. So we have to make sure that they don't cost us money because we've seen in other jurisdictions where there's been a decrease in violations, and it ends up costing jurisdictions money, they end up having to cancel the program. Which leads me to my second point. I think we've been very careful, and I would, I would hope that we will continue this, but that's, that's not my decision. We have not put salary and benefits on a special fund. And so if we're looking to expand the use of that fund, and we're going to start funding that with FTEs, as a department director, that would concern me because now I have people's salaries and benefits based on a fund that may get bigger, may get smaller, or may go away altogether. We've been very careful with that, because we don't want to have to lay people off. So those are some of the considerations. School zone cameras right now, just, I want to be clear, you know, we're, we're planning that COVID is going to be done next year. We're planning, we're going to get back to life. But it's important to note that since March, there's been zero revenue generation in our school zone cameras. And thankfully, we have a clause in our contract where if school's not able to happen, we don't pay for the cameras. They basically remain dormant. So tickets aren't being issued. They haven't been issued since probably late March.
Right.
But hopefully that comes back. On the issue of automated enforcement, if I could, Councilmember Thomas, I think another part to look at this, if we're looking at it, is the red, red light camera fund and those issues. Again, your decision as a council and the mayor's direction as to whether that happens, it's outside my lane, above my pay grade, so to speak. But the same considerations, I would want to apply there. They have, there has to be a need where there will be violations. We can pay for the cameras. And I want to be very careful about putting salary benefits on, on, as something we pay for on an annual basis.
I understand that. And I see your point. And I know Auburn has some situations where the cost was too high. But we've done some of these studies, and it shows a great need in certain areas where safety of the children is at hand. I'm not worried about the income so much, and I, I hesitate that I started out that way. But when there's a need out there, and particularly, I know that you, you're not having a need because there's no school right now. But next year, as we go, hopefully into normality, that we will look at this. And is that, you say that's up to us, and I understand that. But we usually respond to a request from, I think it's from really your department. Okay, we need three more cameras at such and such a school. So is that, are you saying that we, we start the program, or do you start it?
Well, I think, and, and some of you that have been on the council for longer, I wasn't always part of those conversations. But the ones I have, typically, what I've seen is that's been considered and had been considered for years. But what comes about is a substantial criminal justice need. So case in point being the body worn cameras. Those are hugely expensive, as you know. And really, there isn't identifiable funding in the current structure of our general fund and what have you. We just don't have the money. So we, I think what happens is the conversation, and I do, I do have these conversations, and I'll happy to have in the future to say, here is a need, and would you consider entertaining funding that need through this automated enforcement program? But again, you know, those are capital kind of one time purchases versus an ongoing employee kind of thing. So there's a balance there. We try to keep them to capital funding one time. But as far as process, I, I, I think that if there's interest in that, that can be made through the mayor, and I can be directed to work on that at any time.
Okay, all right. You bring up a couple of questions, but I'll wait. So the, going on to something new that's gonna possibly come up, is, is there a need for officers to be in the high school? Across the nation, we're seeing some movement that they want to withdraw the officers, for example, at Kim Braden and Kent Ridge. So what is your general feeling? Have you seen that these are beneficial, these officers? Just a general, I guess, response?
Yes, okay. So my answer is yes, they've been very beneficial. And I do want to say, from my perspective, there's, there's not been a broad base retraction of those services with many school districts. I know there are some, but I don't think it's the majority that are doing it, specifically to Kent. I've been in contact with the school board and Kent school officials. And right now, there is no plan to remove the school resource officers from our schools. Just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it, Madam President?
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. One of my questions was about school zone cameras. You already answered that. Revenue has dropped, it's expected. I'm in agreement with board body worn camera, cameras worn by detectives. So we're all in agreement there. First of all, I wanted to clarify that there's rumors out there that some of the council members want to defund the police, and that is not the case. We simply want some systematic changes. So one of the things we council thinks as a priority is correspondent model and data analysis. And Mayor agrees with that, as she mentioned that in her newsletter on Friday. So we're all in agreement that it's important to us. But so we need to make it happen. And we know the state has a big hole to fill, and in their budget cycle. So we can't expect them to pass it in next year. And it's, it's a greater need for our community at this time. So I want to propose that we look at some funding, instead of, you know, the cars per officer program, we find a way to at least fill a few correspondent positions and data analysis. And that's all I have to say. And thank you for your presentation, Chief.
Thank you. And Council President, I want to take whatever questions you have. I did have someone, some of them were sent in written form, and I haven't gotten to those yet. So just want to earmark those.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Larmor.
Thank you, Council President. And yes, I'm actually, Councilmember Cor expressed what, you know, I had wanted to echo, and that is just that, you know, this correspondent model, I appreciate that we all are in agreement, but I agree, we can't count on a legislature. And if we're really going to make this commitment to our community, we have to be willing to find a way to fund it. If we turn around and it's June, and it has not gone through the legislature, I think it's incumbent on us to do that. I think, you know, cars per officer might be something, or maybe we don't commit to the 2020 purchase and hold on that and reserve those funds. So based on that, the question I have for the chief is, do you have any idea the cost we'd be looking at? Should we have to stand this up ourselves? Do you have any estimates or have done any research in that area?
I, I don't have specific costs for you. I started looking at some of the grants that were awarded through WASPIC, probably a year and a half to two years ago. And so I don't have that data back yet. I think most of what's been identified as cost is the cost of having a mental health professional or the direct response model is the one I like, where the person has the ability to do a commitment if necessary. But also caseworkers and navigators. So, you know, most of the jurisdictions that have them are much smaller than Kent. So I think it's more than just one MHP and one counselor. So just, you know, ballpark numbers, just for FTE, I could see that easily being, you know, somewhere, you know, posted $200,000 there a year, ongoing, depending on how we could look at structuring a contract and whatnot. So just ballpark, I think that's where it starts. That doesn't include any continued support through existing resources by the PD, or equipment and supplies like vehicles and things of that nature. So I, we are working on gathering that. What I, what I, I think I'd like to offer up is, we're working on this at the state level, but we're also working regionally. We have very strong partnerships with our regional, South King County in particular. The Valley Cities have a very strong network of police chiefs and mayors. And I've had conversations with the mayor. I know she's been discussions. We have been looking, Taquilla's council is also looking at funding this. They're, they're realizing it's very expensive, and they may not have the resources. So we're kind of looking at, is there an opportunity to partner regionally? What if six Valley Cities went into the pot and could stand up a portion, and everybody paid their one six to get the ball rolling? That might be something that gets us closer there more soon, sooner than the, the state legislature. And I don't want to pick on the state, but I, it's, it's interesting to note that this is, everybody universally supports this. I, I haven't found anyone that thinks this isn't something we have to do. So the notion that it wouldn't be a priority to fund, I, I, yeah, it's important. It's, I haven't talked to a single person that says, don't do it. So I, I, I don't understand how that gets held up, but that's, like I said, beyond my, my scope. So that's what I, that's what I have for you. We will get you, we are working on some harder numbers.
Chief, if I can just chime in, I appreciate your response. I think one of the things that we have to be very careful with at this point is if, and I absolutely agree with my colleagues, that this is extremely important. It's important to us. It's important to cities in the region that we have this co-response model, that we all have some kind of a data collection that we can compare things to. But if we were to put this into our budget, I feel like the state legislator would look at it and say, we're not going to help you fund this because you've already figured out a way. I think that that gets very tricky for us. I think the chief brought up some really good points. I think collaborating with cities in our region to figure out, I know that there's other options, and there's other things to look at. I know the mayor has been talking to other cities about additional funds that could be available to be used for something like this. So that's something to think about. We, as a council, also have the opportunity next year during the mid biennial budget adjustment, if we feel like this wasn't funded or wasn't funded appropriately, that that would be an opportunity for us to look at it again during that time. So that's just my thought. I am going to look at hands that are raised, and I'm going to turn to Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. And also, I appreciate Councilmember Cor's statement that she made, because there is a perception out there that some of us believe in defunding the police. And I know on record, you do have Councilmember Troutner, Thomas, and Fincher, as well as myself, that have made that statement. And so sometimes, you know, people can read into things. And I know I talked to Councilmember Larmor on the show. They made that statement as well to me. And I think that's good, that we all believe in public safety, that we all believe in defunding the police is not the right way. But we also believe in accountability. I think Councilmember Cor, you know, with some of the thing that she talked about, you know, I don't know, there's a possibility, maybe trying to figure out doing a little bit of something now. And then I strongly believe the state is going to put something in place. But I also don't want us to go too far down the road, and then not be aligned with the state may implement. So I just want to appreciate my council member. And, and we just had a look at the possibility, see what can be done, anything can be done. And I like the fact, we do have a bottom budget, you know, and between us as council member, from what I'm hearing, this is important to all of us. And we want to make sure that we get this done. So, you know, I will be leading the way, you know, if the state don't implement something, and when our bottom budget come, I will be screaming, yelling, and making sure we do have something in place around accountability. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just want to make sure that we didn't lose. You mentioned the data, the data collection. So that, too, is important, not just the co-responder model. I'd like to suggest that that multi-city collaboration model mentioned for co-responder might also be looked at for data collection, because it would behoove all of the cities to be collecting data. But that it's very important, because if we don't know what we, where we stand now, we have no sort of baseline to measure against, not for ourselves, not against others. And we don't know what is happening, and we can't correct anything that may be happening, and we can't prove anything is not happening with that, without that data. So I would like the same figures, Chief, if you could give us some, probably Chief in IT, give us figures on what it would also, data collection, since that goes beyond just the person with systems and everything. Thank you. One more part of that is that if we didn't fund it now, I could agree with waiting until the budget adjustment. If we had some sort of confirmation that we would indeed do something, because I'm not as confident that, I know that we have very responsible and very dedicated legislator, legislators that we deal with here. But I have concerns from some of their cohorts throughout the rest of the state, that that could be stymied, and we may not get especially funding, even if we get agreement that something needs to be done as far as coresponders and data. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Councilmember Michelle?
Thank you, Council President. And I echo Councilmember Fincher's concerns. And I'm going to hold Councilmember Voice to his word. And Chief, do you have any idea how much data collection would cost?
Ballpark, I don't. It would be a stab in the dark. The last numbers I saw, including FTE, the systems, and all of that, I'm going to guess is approaching a million dollars. But that's a complete wild guess, just based on some initial projections. So I don't know. And it's hard, because when you ask for vendors to give you exact quotes, they're very hesitant to do that until they've defined scope of work and whatnot. But additionally, what's out on the market right now are dashboard things that are kind of a lower level of what you're looking at. Obviously, we'd like an outward facing dashboard at some point, but it doesn't really get to the analytics that we're talking about here, because they really don't exist in the industry. So it, I don't have a good number for you. I'm sorry.
Can I have a follow up, Council President?
Yes, please.
And are you confident that if we were to hire an analyst, that we wouldn't need a consultant to kind of help put forward this program? Or do you think we need a consultant in the beginning?
I would probably defer you to our IT Director, Mike Carrington, for that kind of analysis. You are probably talking about the most inept member of ELT when it comes to technology. So, so, yeah, I don't know if Mike's listening, wants to take that now or during his presentation. But I think they have very strong program management systems that they follow, and I defer to him.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember Larmor?
I was off mute, sorry. Thank you, Council President. So Chief, and this, and actually, maybe this is just a procedural question for Tony as well. So there, I had raised a question in Julie's section of around the money we're spending on the youth, the youth and crime prevention programs that are tied to both parks and police. And so, and the police are, I don't know, do you want to address this now, or hold it till after the other written questions are addressed? Because it's, I don't believe it's in the written question.
Could you repeat your question? I have some notes from that portion, but.
Yeah, so we're spending over $3 million in the preventative programs in, under human services, and a number of those are police. And I'd asked about, you know, success and, you know, equity and diversity in those programs, and how are measuring success and making sure that we are engaging with the actual high risk youth and not, and not youth that are already well supported in the community, but actually reaching the ones that we need, we need to be with. So I don't, I actually, I guess I just asked the question now anyway. So I was asking if we wanted to include that, the other questions, but I just asked it, so.
Can you repeat the question? Can you repeat the question? I'm not just trying to follow the question, Molly. Could you just, can you repeat the question, please?
So we're spending a considerable amount of human services money in preventative programs. A number of those are tied directly to the police. So it's our youth board, our Game of Life Conference, sorry, my printout is very, very small. On the cops in schools, the great program, Police Explorer Program, Teen Academy. My question is, how are we, how do we know that, how are we measuring success in these programs? How do we know we're reaching that, you know, maybe, you know, 30% of our communities in crisis? I mean, I'm gonna make a leave that maybe 30% of our youth are. So how do we know that we are actually programming to reach the youth that need intervention and need support and mentoring? And not, you know, just.
Not just the good kids.
I want to know that these are not just feel-good programs that are reaching youth that are already well-supported.
Okay, I got it now. Thanks. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you.
Okay, so it's a, it's a great question and I'm, the reason I have my readers on, because you're right, Councilmember Lormer. There's some micro fonts on this spreadsheet here. So the the first thing I would offer to you is the makeup of our schools and where we're at and and our community. And and I've said this at other presentations, there is no way that you can do your job as a government entity in the city of Kent and not be impacting people of color on a regular basis. So that is is an automatic throughout any of the programs we do. If you look at our conferences for our youth boards or our leadership team, if you look at the makeup of the KM Police Science Class and our Explorer Program, it is richly diverse. And I can't quantify to you, because we don't, we don't measure this. I can't quantify, you know, what their socioeconomic status is, or whether they, you know, they come from abusive homes or there's, there's trauma. I imagine there is, but I don't have specifics on that for you. But I will tell you that anecdotally, I do know that a lot of the kids that we serve in those programs do have issues like, like, like so many do. It's just, in the, in the way that we're engaging, I think the focus doesn't get to that level of, of, of understanding. Not because we don't want to know, it's just the, just the makeup of the program is more of a instruction-based, mentor-based program. So, but back to trying to answer more specifically on your question. I would argue, just off the top of my head, I know Councilmember Troutner and Mayor Ralph have worked on this. Our Game of Life conferences are probably more than 50% people of color, students of color. Cops in schools, same thing, whatever the makeup. So when our, when our officers are at Kent Elementary or Meeker, we know that they're predominantly engaging, mentoring and connecting with underprivileged youth, particularly in socioeconomic realms. As far as trauma and all that, again, I, we don't, we don't have information on that. The Great Program specifically, the Great Sense for Gang Resistance Education and Training. That one specifically, we are getting to preventative measures for those that are high-risk. I will tell you, particularly in some of our downtown elementary schools, there is major concern there. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to bring attention to, to good students in a bad way. So I won't name the school, but I will tell you, there are two schools in our downtown Valley area in particular where we know there is a strong presence of gangs, particularly Latino gangs, that we are really working to keep the kids out of directly. So if that goes to what you're talking about, there's that. But yeah, that's, I know it's not a great answer, but that's what I have for you.
Chief, if I can chime in really quickly too, I can speak a little bit on behalf of the Police Youth Board. A majority of that group is grant-funded. And outreach extends to middle and high school students. Anyone can apply to be a part of the youth board. And we are always looking to increase that group. It is a very diverse group. Like I said, we have students from both middle and high school. And they, you know, are leaders in our community and focused on providing, making sure that our students and our youth in these schools are making good life choices. That's kind of the premise behind that. But we are always welcome to new members. It's an application process and there's no, you know, we're not going to turn people down. So, Madam Mayor, do you want to comment on that as well?
I do. Just some clarification. Thank you, Council President, on Youth Board in particular. So as Council President said, that was a federal grant over the past 10 years. We've actually been doing Game of Life Conference for, I think, coming up on 30 years. There were, several years ago, there was a deliberate decision made to limit it to only Kent School District students. It used to be a region-wide, so we had students coming from Yonkla and Gig Harbor and Seattle. The idea was to limit, limit it to Kent schools to increase the participation on, from Kent schools. And our Community Education Department works directly with counselors in the schools. And and really does target those kids for participation that have additional needs or maybe life experiences that are making it hard for them to fulfill that leadership potential. So there's a lot of work done with those kids ahead of time. And then day of conference, and then they actually go back into the schools and present leadership programs to their peers. So it's been very, 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 very successful. And I would say of all of our boards and commissions, that it's the most diverse group of kids from, from all areas and and all backgrounds in our community.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lormer, do you have any other, did you, what's your question?
I just follow up on that. Thank you for the additional information. I do recall, forgive me, I forget what you meaning it was, but I do recall that there was some comments from the community that the application process for, I think it was a Police Youth Board, was somewhat cumbersome. And it was, you know, only available in one, one language. And so are we taking any, are we going to be addressing that process and making that a little bit more accessible?
We can certainly look at that. I know that we've got ongoing work to identify. And we have already actually begun the process of identifying some of our public publications and processes to start getting those translated into other languages. So I will get with our Community Education Unit and see what that looks like for them and what can be done there.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Voice.
Thank you, Madam President. And I just want to, Councilmember Lormer kind of, a statement kind of brought some thoughts to me. I think, you know, the program, I've seen some of them in action, they are a great program. I think the thing that we may want to try to focus on, which is always hard to do, is that, you know, the people that in the program are the people that want to be and should be. I think there are some kids out there that should be in the program and those are the one that is not in the program, right? So it's just something to think about. How can we reach out to those kids that would benefit from this program? That may not fill out the application, may not raise their hand, but somehow, how can we go and recruit them and say, hey, this is really a good thing, you really should be part of it. So I would like for us to really think outside the box and figure out how we could reach some of those kids that really need to be, should be, and could benefit from the program, not the one that, you know, is going to be good no matter what. So this is something to think about as we move forward.
Great suggestion, Councilmember Voice. Councilmember Fenter.
Thank you, Madam President. So I had also shared, Councilmember Lormer, excuse me, Lormer's concerns. And I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Voice. But I, I had no doubt that all of our programs were open to everyone and that everyone was welcome as far as the application, what we were saying. But there's a difference in that and actually making a program so that it is intentionally welcome to everyone. As I've said before, you can say everyone, but there are groups who do not feel included in that, especially some of our underrepresented groups, black, brown, whites who are in lower socioeconomic classes. And so that intentional outreach is what is needed to be able to increase the numbers of people who are already there and then taking a look at people who are there. Why, and if people are coming in but not sticking with the program, why aren't they sticking with the program? You know, figuring all of those sort of things out, but going out to those kids who normally, this would not be the group that they would reach out to. It's one thing having a teacher bring someone or a counselor, but making it so that some of these kids are sticking up their own hands wanting to come into the program, that they know about the program, they know the benefits of the program and their parents also know.
Thank you, Councilmember Fenter. All right, Chief, did we cover everything from your presentation or did you still have something else? Oh, you're on mute, sorry.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there were some written questions that I didn't get to, that I can briefly touch on and it's, it's kind of overlaps a little. If that's okay, and then I'll turn it back to you. Okay, so one of the questions that came in was what percentage of the car program could, have we completed? The answer to that is about 75%. Again, this is, this will be your three and four of a four-year process. The question regarding money and cost savings, the way the program is designed was we don't start to see significant cost savings to taxpayers until we fully implement it. So that's one of the potential harms of not completing it. Previously, prior to the program, our annual maintenance, operation and replacement costs was 21,500 per vehicle per year. With this program, we've reduced and will, and once we get it fully completed, our replacement, maintenance and operation costs will drop down to 12,500. So that's a significant cost savings per car. But again, once we get them outfitted. We talked about, there was a question about the benefits of them. It has, we've had over a half dozen lifesaving efforts from officers coming and going, traveling to and from work. We've helped on numerous stranded motorists and collisions. They've intervened and arresting violent criminals, including burglary suspects and robberies. Again, all on their time off because they were in a car that they had their equipment in and could take action as a police officer. One of the main things that we asked for the funding for this program was the emergency management role. The ability to respond to a crisis like an earthquake or, you know, some major catastrophe in the region, flooding, whatnot. To be able to do that where officers have their equipment and can respond directly versus the prior model where they have to go to the station, get their gear, get in a car and go, it's, it's a significant benefit. We've seen it hugely come in play, like I said, particularly with COVID. And one of the things we didn't anticipate was, thank God, we have those cars because it allows our officers to stay out of the station, they have their own gear, they have their own rolling office. They're not coming in contact as much as they would normally inside the building if we didn't have, have these assigned cars. So that's a huge deal. And the last thing, I'll touch on that before I get to the other questions that I haven't answered. There's, I want to remind, you know, as we maintain a pool of cars, those cars tend to be the oldest cars in the fleet. And so at some point, they age out regardless of whether we wanted to get rid of them or not at this point. And I, and as the performance degradates on those cars, so does the safety for the officers who are on a daily basis running lights and sirens to emergency calls. So that's a concern. And then we've talked prior about, this has become, is becoming an industry standard. It's becoming more so in King County, but it's, it's 100% in other counties. Where if you don't offer a take-home car, you are not offering the resources to candidates to attract the best and brightest. And so you're seeing most of the, the departments in South King have take-home vehicles. And so that's, if we were to take away that or reduce it, that becomes an issue for retention and hiring, just dovetailing that. The other question I had, actually, that one's fine, that was kind of the same question that came in. I was asked to break down capital budget, which we haven't talked to yet. So we had one capital budget asked, that was to do the necessary upgrades and retro and improvements to the jail. I want to note that it's a $600,000 ask, so I know it's real money. I get that. The reason we have to do it is L and I require it. And if, if we want a breakdown of what exactly we're doing per dollar, I'm prepared to give you that. But for time, it is required to have a range. There are no other indoor ranges available to us in the region for police training. And so we very much think this is justified and needed. Again, it was part of a longer-term plan. And I, and we already talked about increased schools on camera, so I think I covered all the, the written questions, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Chief. We're kind of getting a little behind schedule. I want to give my colleagues just a couple more minutes if you have any additional questions. Councilmember Voice.
I just want to, I, I think it was, might have been Councilmember Lormer, I might have been, have the question around the training. Just getting back to our previous process to make sure that the question got answered, are they okay with it? So just want to throw that out there.
Good reminder. Councilmember Lormer, did that answer your question or did you have anything additional?
Right, I don't recall a question on training.
Okay, so. Questions in this section or did you, do you feel like those got answered?
I'm good.
Okay. And Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. So I had questions about the firing range and the chief sort of answered it. So we cannot go and get time at another department's range or that wouldn't be cost-effective. Can you explain that?
Yeah, it, there's a cost issue and not being able to control the cost is one part of it. But the bigger issue is there aren't many around. So our options for police ranges right now would be Seattle's range, which multiple other agencies already booked time to train there because they don't have their own range. And then you, you're looking at as far away as Tacoma. Pierce County has an outdoor range, and these are outdoor ranges. So a big distinction is Kent Police Department can train year-round, most departments cannot. We have one of the few indoor ranges around and very thankful to have that resource. We've also looked at private ranges and what that looks like. Again, those are outdoor, but the costs are not controllable there, we're subject to their scheduling. There are some concerns, to be honest, on affiliations and the makeup of the ownership of some of those facilities. It just becomes something where we don't have the control. And I think an important thing to, to remember is we have it, we have it here now. And yes, it's expensive. I understand that, very respectful to that, that point. But to maintain it, this, yeah, this is what it would cost and it would be a huge issue if we had to try and go to another source.
And can you tell me how often we need to clean the range, like get rid of all the lead and that kind of stuff?
So the major cleaning happens, I want to say at least four times a year, but daily cleaning occurs. So every time we shoot in there, there's a cleanup process. It's almost like, we've had COVID in the, in the range this whole time, so it gets cleaned after every use. And so it's a, it's an ongoing issue that's mainly handled by our range master and training staff to take care of that. They've been trained and outfitted years ago through risk management. We consulted with L and I, brought in scientific hygienists and they, they set up a very robust program to keep it clean and safe. It's also somewhat expensive.
All right. Did that answer your questions, Councilmember Michelle?
Yes, I, can I ask another question about something else?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Chief, can you tell me, with all the things that are going on right now, what happens if the officers decide that they don't want to take their vehicle home?
We haven't had that. And I think I saw potentially that question was, was coming. I was at that, our leadership retreat yesterday, so to answer your question. And we were, so 40 of the supervisors above in the, in the department were there from all the divisions. And I asked about that. That has not come up in, in our, in our leadership group. None of them would, would, would go do away with their car. Now, that's not to say that couldn't happen. We would not compel someone to have a take-home car. I don't know, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, I don't know that we would compel someone. So if they didn't want one, I think we would try to outfit them in a full car, which you could see would cause some problems if we got to maintain a full fleet as well.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Voice.
I forgot my question. Why don't you move on and maybe pop back in my head later, okay?
Councilmember Fenter.
Thank you. Chief, as far as the question on the, on the range, with the officers who are. with the officers who are, okay, so I'm of the belief that it's a benefit having our own range possibly, or partially because the officers are able to train here, instead of having to go somewhere else, taking more time off of their regular responsibilities here in Kent. If they have to drive to Seattle, then they're not in the area. The extra drive time back and forth is going to take time away from their duties here. Is that the case, or is it two completely separate things?
You are spot-on with that, and I glanced over that fact, but it's true. So we would have to schedule them to leave. What's nice is they drive right up to our Eastdale Training Center. They, they spend about an hour, and then they're back on the road to do it. So we have done off-site training every other year for our rifle course. Generally, the way we have to do that to keep staffing and minimize overtime, although it comes with a lot of overtime, is that we schedule them for a full 10-hour day. And so one group at a time goes to get training. Usually, it's five groups we put through to get everybody through.
I thought of my question, Madam President.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Voice.
Hey, Chief, you might have said this, if so, I didn't hear you. Are there any other organization using our range, and do we charge them?
Great question. Very few of our agencies, we get requests all the time. And so very few are allowed in there because of the impact and the cost absorbed by us. Currently, we don't recruit that by asking or charging a fee. I defer to PAP, but I think we'd have to get council improvement to bring in revenue like that. And so right now, we use it at a rate that we wouldn't have a lot of opportunity for that. But it's not something we'd be opposed to if we could ensure that it was worth doing in terms of preserving the range for our use as well. So we've thought about, maybe we could contract it out to other agencies. We've not taken any steps towards that.
I was thinking about this roughly capacity-wise, I mean, what would you say the use of capacity for that range today? 50%, 60%?
It, 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 yes, probably closer to, to over 60%. And, and because our tactical team trains there, as well as all of our officers. Additionally, because we've been in a hiring mode for several years now, there is, the biggest chunk of time is for training incoming officers. There's a two-week firearms qualification training. So every time we get a new officer, that's 40 hours, or 80 hours rather, of indoctrination and training in firearms use of force. So there is room, it would probably have to be after-hours, nighttimes and night, and weekends maybe, just kind of thinking about it. But the challenge there is, does that work for the other agencies that want to use it as well, so?
I think about the possibility, right? So we do have people working three shifts, right? So if I'm training, I'm second shift employee, right? There's no reason why it couldn't be open second shift, because I'm a third shift night employee. I'm thinking, there's no reason why I couldn't go and do that training on my night shift, I don't necessarily know that, that appears. But I mean, I think from a cost perspective, and I know it's probably more than that, but I just think it might be something worth looking into to kind of help offset the cost. If we will bring other agency in, so I, I trust you, you know, and if that could help offset some of my costs, and by bringing other agencies in, where it's only off-shift hours, then I think that might be worthwhile.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Yeah, so I just wanted to know, so you said LNI is requiring us to bring this, I guess. Is every one of these items listed here, is that an LNI requirement? Are there any on this list that are not?
No, all of them are, well, let me correct that. So the air handling system, the sound isolation, the redoing of the floors, resurfacing, you actually have, we actually have to drill up a couple inches of the surface and redo it because, because of the saturation of lead. So that, that is, and, and so, and then the lead management, which includes changing out the HIPAA filters, the cleaning, sanitation that goes on on a regular basis. The only thing that is not HIPAA-required is the update of our targeting system. And what that is, is the mechanics that move and turn the targets that go back and forth. Those are 10 years old, I'm trying to get you the, the specifics here. That system's 10 years old, and in terms of software, we can't find vendors that will support the software because it's too old. So pretty soon, it's, it's going to fail, and it's already starting to fail. So the, the need for that, to be able to get that updated is important. I'm trying to get that specific breakdown for you on what that cost is.
Looks like it's $125,000?
Yes.
Document?
Yes, thank you, sorry.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Thomas. Oh, you're on mute. Sorry, Les, you're on mute.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to apologize to my co-counselors for eating in front of them, but I had a low insulin event here while I was talking earlier, and I, I needed to get some food. Sorry about that, guys.
Thanks, Les. We're going to be taking lunch here in just a minute. I see Councilmember Michelle, your hand is still raised, as well as Councilmember Larmour. Do you still have additional questions? Councilmember Michelle? Oh, all right. Any other questions for the chief before we get ready for break here? Councilmember Voice? Nope?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Chief, for taking the time to answer all of our questions and for that presentation. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right. We are going to go ahead and move IT to after lunch so that everyone can have time to take a break, get something to eat. And let's go ahead and come back to the meeting at 1:15. So everybody, enjoy your little break, and we'll see you back here in about an hour.